All right, well, welcome to the February 8th, 2021, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. Our apologies for the delay in getting started. We had some technical difficulties which we hope are now resolved. But welcome to you all. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to read the virtual meeting notice.
Yes, thank you. This meeting is being held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of City Council are present at this meeting through electronic means, and members of the public may view it at www.fallschurchva.gov/councilmeetings. Public comments are accepted virtually from those who have signed up to speak via the meeting platform by noon on the day of the meeting. Speaker forums are located at www.fallschurchva.gov/publiccomment until noon on the day of the meeting. Following submission of any speaker forum, speakers will receive email instructions to join the meeting. Written public comments, including those for public hearings sent in advance of the meeting, will be accepted at cityclerk@falschurchva.gov. And we always accept comments at that address, cityclerk@falschurchva.gov, and I send them to City Council as soon as possible, and then they are summarized at the next regular meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Will you call roll, please?
I will. Vice Mayor Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes, here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Here.
Ms. Shance Hiscott?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. And let's move on now to the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't know if we have our screen that shows the U.S. flag on it, or maybe we can pull that up, but I would ask that you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Wherever you might be, please rise and hopefully have a flag that you can look to, but if not, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Again, welcome to you all. Before we get started, I have some important news, some breaking news. It is our city attorney's birthday on Saturday, and so we want to wish her all a happy birthday. And as is our custom, the newest City Council person will now sing "Happy Birthday" in solo to her, and I believe that's Ms. Hiscott now. So I don't know if that was mentioned to you, Debbie, when you got started, but that is our custom and our, actually, I think it's in our rules. So I'm kidding. But anyway, happy birthday to our city attorney. Hopefully, she's on the line and joining us, but we wish her the best. Best to thank her for all the great work she's done for us. But let's move on now to the receipt of public comments. Madam Clerk, will you read the summary of written comments?
I will. I think we received this at the last meeting. The Social Justice Committee of Falls Church wrote to support the use of voluntary concessions to provide more affordable housing at the Broad and Washington Project. John Wilson of 301 Buxton Road wrote in support of the concept of using voluntary concessions to provide for more affordable housing. We got a number of comments on the noise ordinance. The following wrote to ask that daytime noise hours not be extended and shared their problems with noise from outdoor entertainment at the Falls Church Distillers. These folks are from 455 South Maple Street. That's the 455 at Tanner Hill building. Scott Adams, Joshua Commonets, E. Del Rosario, Natalie Duffy, Daryl Green, Mike Hernandez, Rob Kelly, Lindsay Kawaki, Sherri Maples, Mark Plattenberg, Laura Rosenblatt, Greg Wicks, and another resident who asked to remain anonymous. And I did receive a few other comments after I put this together, so let me look at those. Let's see. We have Melissa Ragoo from 455 also shared problems with the noise and asked that the hours not be extended. Dion Bolden is also a resident of 455 South Maple, facing the Falls Church Distillers, and would not like to see the time extended later than it already is. And then we received an email from David Tax from Clarendon's Beach Shack, and he, let's see, what did he say? He says that he has tried to maintain, be a good neighbor while maintaining his business and providing entertainment, and hopefully that's been a good balance. And he asks that you continue to support businesses that are trying to stay in business. But he also recommends some kind of field trips to different locations to see what the decibel levels are and how they sound at different locations. So those were our noise ordinance comments. And we also did receive, one resident from Merrill House wrote with the same request that the hours not be extended and stated they were also disturbed by the noise at Falls Church Distillers. Deborah Z. Roth wrote in support of extending daytime noise hours to at least 11:00 p.m. to support businesses. Claudia and Eric Schultz of 107 Lawton Street asked that the noise code mirror Arlington County's code to define daytime hours as between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. on weekdays and 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. on Saturday, Sunday, and legal holidays. John Wilson of 301 Buxton Road also provided some comments on general administration of a noise ordinance. The following asked for the council's assistance in reopening schools for in-person learning. Julie Felgar, James Fitzgerald of 316 North Underwood Street, Kendra Lee, Evans and Elizabeth Rice of 220 Midbale Street, Sarah and Jeff Shows, 303 North Virginia Avenue, Renee Sturgill, Rob Suter, and Drew Walter. In other comments, Wendy Cherry of 3713 George Mason Drive asked that COVID vaccinations not be made mandatory. Sean Dasekin asked that parking enforcement for state inspection sticker violations cease on city streets. Sally Phillips of 200 North Maple Avenue asked that the city provide waste pickup at the Park Towers condominium. And the Village Preservation and Improvement Society provided comments on the proposed public art chapter of the comprehensive plan. And that was it.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Are there any comments from folks who are on the line right now?
No, actually, we didn't have anybody sign up to speak live this evening.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's move on now to the report, the annual report of the EDA. Is Mr. Young with us now? Bob?
I am here.
All right. Well, listen, Bob, you guys have done a lot of great work over these past years, and particularly this last one. So we look forward to hearing more formally what you have to say, but want to, before even begin, congratulate you on your fine efforts.
Well, thank you. I'll direct those comments to staff, first of all. They've just worked their heads off. I'll come to that during the briefing. And our EDA members have put in extraordinary amounts of time to accomplish the goals that we have. Next slide. We all know about the COVID response. I'll go into the programs that we undertook, but let me just note that we've had very positive feedback from the business community. This is one of the few programs aimed directly at them, you know, for some time. Many of them let staff know that if it didn't save their business, it certainly helped a great deal. Next slide. As you know, we did grab-and-go banners. You can see them all over the city. Next slide. Let me just say that I'm going to go through these pretty quickly. Council members should feel free to interrupt if you have questions, but we've got quite a deck here, and I don't want to take up too much time. As you all know, with council's great help, we're able to distribute $500,000 to the business community. People were grateful for it. That includes the $4,000 from the high school, 2020 high school seniors, which I think was quite an effort on their part and should be applauded. Next slide. We modified the Little City logo to add "safe." Next. Poll banners, you can see them out on the street. I'm sure everyone has. Next slide. Posters are all over the city. I thought this was a particularly helpful one, you know, just sort of getting the word out to the public. Next slide.
All right. Looks like I'm having a little trouble with the PDF. I'm going to go to Slide 9 and see if that works for you, Bob.
Yeah, that's fine. Perfect. You'll see some of these signs around the city, not a lot of them, but I know, for example, over by Panera Bread where they do quite a bit of business with people picking up curbside. It's been very, very helpful. The city moved very, very quickly to help us with these, and it's greatly appreciated that staff was able to do that. Next slide. Basically, all this is saying is we were able to get permission to continue our work, which you're seeing the results of. Next slide. I think we ought to take a minute or two on the wayfinding study. You all know that that's been going on now. We began our effort about a year and a half ago. Next slide. You'll see here a listing starting on September 10th of 19, where we began to meet about this particular project, engage folks who became our consultants. We had every one of these meetings listed here, around 12 or 15. We're all public. Let me point out, hold on a second. Give me just a minute here, and I'll get to it. On September 11th, third one down, that was an in-person meeting with a lot of folks, including Vipis. A lot of comments were received, and many were incorporated into the plan. So the main point here is this has been an extremely public process with many, many, many meetings, all of which were public. As you'll recall, we had two meetings with the council that were all broadcast virtually to go over the plan. We were very fortunate. The council was willing and able to reimburse our $500,000 grants, and that gave us the funds to be able to fund this entire project. We're pretty close to receiving bids. It's out for bid now. And then we'll see what the numbers look like and what the timeframe is, but we're hoping that we can begin implementation in the spring. Any questions on this program before I move on? Hearing none. We'll go to another of our...
Mr. Young, I do have a question.
Sure.
Just regarding the scope of what we're doing. Because as we've talked about at different times, we were going to do certain pieces and not do all of it at one time. And I wasn't aware of a decision. Did we make a decision, or did the EDA make a decision about the whole package or pieces of it?
There was a lot of discussion, as you point out, about doing a partial implementation program. The decision, as I understood it at the last meeting we had with council, was if council was able to reimburse the second $250,000, which in time council did that, then we would be able to implement the entire program all at one time and thereby, we hope, save around $100,000, not to mention the time involved in, you know, not stringing this out over years, but rather months. Can't hear you.
Sorry. That was all part of that conversation?
Correct.
That we had?
Correct.
On your count. Okay. But we never made any, Mr. Shields, we never made any official announcement to the community that we were headed in that direction or that we were able to fund the whole thing. I ask because people have asked me, well, one person sent me a message asking, was that, when was the decision made to do the whole package? And I had remembered talking about it. I just didn't remember that that decision was made. It must have been at an EDA meeting or another place.
For the wayfinding signage?
Yes.
Specifically? Well, it is EDA dollars that are being used for that, so that was not a council appropriation. That was an EDA appropriation. The City Council's action in the last budget amendment was to fully fund the EDA's Business Assistance Program using CARES money. That was a council decision, and that was made with the last budget amendment. But the funding for the wayfinding signage has been strictly an EDA funding decision.
Okay. So the signs, the existing signs that are there now are going to come down?
Correct.
The old-fashioned, traditional Falls Church?
They're only 50 years old.
That's it? But as part of this, those are going to come down?
Correct.
And the partnership that the city's had with Vipis all along will no longer be there, correct?
Well, you know, I don't know about that aspect of it.
Right, right.
I wasn't aware that there was a formal partnership. Certainly, I've been aware, and there were discussions with Vipis representatives at more than one meeting. Obviously, their concern is they put up these signs 50 or 60 years ago. They liked them. I get that. But a decision is made pretty much community-wide, and certainly in the EDA and with the council. At the last council meeting, it was discussed in great detail, if this, then that. And the EDA took that to mean that council was pretty much on board with the plan, and therefore, we have moved ahead and we're ready to implement.
That all makes sense, and I like these new signs. I just want to make sure I get that, when I reply to the person who's asked me. I'm wondering, Mr. Shields, if there's a way for the city to notify Vipis that this change is going to happen, that their partnership on the signs is no longer needed?
Yes, we can certainly do that. And the nature of the partnership really has been one where Vipis designed the signs, ordered the signs, and then they were delivered to the city's Public Works Department, who then installed the signs. And so that's the way that partnership has worked in the past.
Right. And then whenever one gets damaged, run over, whatever, there's a new one that gets replaced.
That's right. And Vipis paid for the signs as well, and so that was very helpful.
Right. I think it would be gracious to be able to send a note saying, thank you for these many, many years of doing this, and we're on to the next set of signs. Thanks, Mr. Young. I just wanted to clarify all that, and I appreciate all the work that went into this wayfinding.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Hardy, if you have a...
I was just going to add, because when Mary Beth raised the decluttering, so it's not just decluttering the old signs, but as we've talked about in the past, we just have a sign proliferation issue everywhere across the city. So I think part of the work that I'm excited about besides, obviously, the new signage that'll be better, is that we actually get rid of all the old signs that might conflict, and so it really should help with both parking and all the other issues we've had. The second thing while we're on wayfinding is, Mr. Shields, is this going to come back to us when there's actually a construction contract? Is it going to be over kind of the purchasing threshold, and so council will have some sort of formal approving authority?
So because it is EDA funds, that was not the plan. We have put it out to bid, and as Mr. Young noted, that process is underway. We have a pre-bid conference this week. And I'll discuss it with Jim Wise, but because of the funding source, it was not intended that the contract come to City Council for final approval.
I don't need to hold it up. It's just more of a question about how it'll work since it's a little different. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Young.
Okay, next slide. As you all know, we did an extensive parking study. It's important to note that the study found across the city that there's more than adequate commercial parking, except in the two hotspot zones we're all well aware of, behind Dogwood and in that area, and of course, over by Clarendon's. We have a list that I'll show in just a minute of things that were recommended. Kaiser's an important part of that, but we've done what we can moving ahead. Next slide, please. These are the proposed solutions that the study folks proposed to us. We've attempted to move ahead and implement as many as possible, but it's been very, very difficult. Some of these are long-term, some of them are short-term. As you saw on the previous slide, we're able to clean up that area by the city's parking over across on Maple there, Maple and Park. Some of these things have been implemented already in specific projects. We believe that the wayfinding project will help with things like visibility of public parking. There are other things that involve high-tech solutions that start to get into issues of public policy with respect to personal privacy and things like that. But I can assure you that we continue, staff continues to spend time and effort, as does the EDA, trying to implement the results of the study. But let me again come back to the central conclusion, that across the city, there's not a parking problem. So let me leave it at that. Any questions on the parking? Hearing none. Next slide. We continue to work hard with Kaiser Permanente. There's a lot of back and forth. This has gone on for years. We're a lot closer to a solution in terms of getting an electronic sign put up that will prominently notify the public that parking is available at the times in which it is available. As you all know, there's also a proposal for the CIT, CIP, to put the proposed elevator on the face of the building back into the CIP, and that will be an item of further discussion. I think it's something the EDA backs, but there hasn't been any formal action on that. I see Ross has a question.
Yeah, Bob, sorry, my fingers weren't fast enough to get my hand up on the parking. Where did you guys land on studying parking meters in the hotspot zones?
We've landed on, we think it's a good idea, but implementation is an issue. Frankly, Ross, with everything that we've been dealing with, and I really mean everything your staff is dealing with, we just haven't been able to get to it. I personally think it's a good idea. It's on our list. We'll be having an EDA retreat sometime in the next several weeks, and that will certainly be one of the items on the agenda.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Bob. I know you guys got a full plate, but yeah, I appreciate you continuing to look into that. I think it'll help, too. All right. Go ahead. Thanks.
Next slide.
Looks like I'm having another PDF problem.
Well, the next.
So I seem to be missing 16 and 17.
Yeah, those two relate to downtown beautification. And let me just say briefly that, you know, we have put out a lot of new benches and trashcans. They may not be beautiful, but they're very functional. As you all know, we had the mural installed, some electrical boxes wrapped. We continue to spend small amounts of money making sure that Mr. Brown's Park has seasonal plantings. I think it looks great all the time, and that's thanks to staff, mainly Naomi, which we'll get to in a minute. So we're on honoring essential workers.
And Bob, I'm going to try to reopen the slides so they show while you're speaking. I will let the public know they were posted to the website along with the agenda packet while I'm trying to reopen it.
Okay. Well, we attempt to honor essential workers by having the lights on the trees all the time. Our next slide has to do with EDO staffing. We thought it appropriate to include that in this report. We've asked, as you all know, we have been funding a now-full-time position the last year and a half, I believe, and we're hoping that council will include that position as a full-time, city-funded position for the upcoming fiscal year. We think it's critically important. I would point out in this context that if one looks at the programs the city has to help the business community, and I'll come to the other side of that in a minute, there aren't a lot of them, and having this staff position has been really important in outreach, in trying to, you know, everything from the grants to Mr. Brown's Park and so on. So I'm urging council to fund that position. While I'm on positions, before I get to our proposed 2021 program, at the most general level, the EDA feels pretty strongly that in those places where the business community is most touched, if I can put it that way, where there's the most interaction, are those areas that, from our perspective, are ones that are least funded, that is positions. Obviously, I'm going to the area of inspectors and plan reviewers. If one takes a step back for a minute and thinks about, you know, what is the most interaction that businesses have with the city? It's very often when they move in, they have to do work on their space, retail or office, and therefore, they submit plans to the city government. To say that, in my opinion, and the EDA's opinion, that group is underfunded is putting it really, really, really mildly. What they're being asked to do is simply not possible, and I hope that the City Council will take a hard look, trying to have these guys do all the inspections for a huge high school, for Founder's Row. Guess what happens? All the little guys get lost. They can't possibly, they just physically and mentally can't respond the way we would hope they would. It's my understanding that the city has an ongoing... It's my understanding that the city has an ongoing review, and I'm sure we'll be chiming in on that as that comes to the fore, hopefully in the next several weeks. Moving on to 2021, I won't try to go through this whole list, but as you can see, it's ambitious. One area that I would try to point out in a very strong manner is our social media presence. The city generally, and the EDA in particular, is really just awful. These things aren't kept up. That should be the most important thing that the city's doing with respect to things like tourism. What's going on in the city? Staying in touch with our citizens. I think that's an important one, and we will be working hard on that and coming to you with proposals later in the year. We'll have a retreat in the next few weeks, and we'll develop a very specific list of projects going forward. Let me just end with the EDA members have put in hundreds and hundreds of hours in this past year, but staff has put in thousands. And I can't say enough good things about our very, very small staff that have done yeoman's work. Nights, weekends, believe me, I get the emails 24/7. So I want to publicly thank them and thank council for its support. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, well, thank you, Bob, and thank you to the rest of the EDA. I know that's not with you tonight, and EDA staff, EDA staff. You guys have been busy and done a lot of great work during these difficult times, and it's evident through this report, all the great work you've done. So our hats off to you and to the, to the staff and your board members. Let's open it up to questions then. Questions from City Council? From Mr. Young? Anybody have any questions? So let's start with Mr. Snyder, and then we'll go to Mr. Lichtenhouse. Dave?
Thank you, and Bob, thank you for your comprehensive presentation. My question is, since budgetary actions have been requested, I'm very interested in calculation of the value of the EDA's work and what we can expect in terms of new businesses or other business support if we respond affirmatively to the budgetary request. Businesses function on dollars and cents, and so I appreciate the work, but what I would like is more of a quantification. How many new businesses have been brought in as a result of the EDA? How many would we expect? How many businesses have been preserved, et cetera, so that we can make a budgetary decision based upon full information? Thank you.
Bob, you're on mute. He's still on mute.
Got it. Let me respond if I may. Actually, we have that work, what we call return on investment, Councilman Snyder. That we're trying to develop those numbers. That's difficult. It's hard to know. You know, we can count businesses that go out of business in most cases. We can, for the most part, account for businesses that come into the city. How one goes about calculating what dollars they generate other than taxes is, and what sort of non-tax impacts they have on the city is difficult, but we intend to undertake that to the best of our ability. I know staff is working on that as we speak.
Thank you very much. Very helpful.
Yep.
Mr. Lichtenhouse, followed by Ms. Scott.
Yeah, thanks. So Bob, the, your comment about communication, social media in particular, you know, I've talked with folks in development planning about that, and it's been an ongoing conversation in the city. I, for one, couldn't agree more that we've got to do more with social media and communications, and especially, and you probably attended some of the same conferences I have. I mean, you typically have a fairly large showing from economic development groups, you know, at things like ICSC and NAOP and ULI, because, you know, regardless of how great your jurisdiction is, regardless of how great your town or city is, how wonderful it is and how much we love it, if people don't know about it, and we're not out there selling it, people aren't going to buy it. And there's a direct correlation to that with businesses. And I think that, especially with the, you know, the number of possible interactions with folks in the business community, folks in the real estate community, they're going to be limited because of COVID going forward. That's social media presence and the consistent, I'll say unified communication and message about Falls Church that gets people interested in opening up a business here, gets people interested in coming shopping at businesses here. Without that, we're going to be missing out, and it, we've kind of, we've, we've, I would say we're at a crossroads, but we've really kind of crossed through that crossroads on the other side. And with all of the development that's taking place and the fact that we are on the region's radar, it's going to be more important forever, or I'm sorry, more important than ever for us to put together that consistent polished messaging about the city, because we are now attracting the tension, or looking to attract the attention of, of, of businesses and foot traffic and dollars to be spent here. So I couldn't agree with that more. And I would certainly urge the city, and if it's a staffing issue, we need to address that, that that's something that, that we look to solve for here in the very near future, because we don't want to put all those hard work and money to work here in the city, you know, building infrastructure, schools, approving development, and not following that with, with the message and communication and social media that is consistent with, you know, the type of brand that we're pursuing here in the city as a whole. So I just want to put an exclamation point on that. Everything else that you've said, Bob, I agree with it, and I appreciate the work that the EDA has done. I think it's incredibly important, especially now that we're all locked down. We don't have the same opportunities to get out there and sell our city and businesses the way that we would like. So thank you for doing that. But that communications piece and having that consistent branded polished message, I think, is incredibly important. So thank you.
All right, Ms. Hiscott, followed by Ms. Hardy.
Just like to add another exclamation point to what Ross was just, was just stating about our social media and like, and you and the EDA have identified, not only having someplace that people could search out on a website, but pushing out the information so that if someone's not necessarily looking for us, we still are getting out, message out to them, meaning proactively building content, building out the network of social media through those organizations and conferences that Ross was listing, that really pushes the Falls Church brand out to people rather than anticipating or waiting for people to come search search us for a place to live, a place to have their business, et cetera, a place to shop or eat. So I'm all in support of that. And again, to reiterate what you're talking about in terms of if it is additional staffing that we need to increase upon that communications plan, I think that also can tie into the return on investment that we can demonstrate by improving that social media presence. And on the staffing and Mr. Snyder's comments about the return on, on investment, I think part of that demonstration is not only on what we bring in or what we keep, but how quickly we can do so. So with regard to inspectors and permit staff, that if you can bring somebody online three, four, five, six months earlier, what does that do to increase your city revenues and the taxes you can collect and the revenue you're going to collect on that? So just including that as part of the return on investment estimations as well. So I think that's really important. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Hardy, followed by Mr. Duncan.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Bob. I've had the privilege of being your liaison for five years now, so I certainly appreciate how active you all have been traditionally, but especially this year, kind of post-COVID, responding to the crisis. As we hopefully move into recovery, I would love the EDA's recommendations on those temporary measures that we took in the spring and whether some of those should actually be permanent. So I know we gave flexibility on signage, kind of outdoor dining, vending, kind of a new way of living. Some parts might make sense, kind of even in the post-COVID world. So I'd love the EDA's thoughts on what you think should stay. And then along those same lines of kind of how to position the city on the recovery point, this will be kind of, I guess, the third voice that kind of emphasizing the need to really market the city. I think there's kind of a unique opportunity for us to think about, again, in that post-COVID world, not only is a city a great place to do business, but also a great place to live, and that line certainly gets blurred where people are going to be working where they live more. So I think the EDA is in a great position to do that and help us. I think before the pandemic, you all had worked on this really great marketing video. I don't know if we ever really launched it, but if we want to refresh kind of our social media presence and really build a bigger audience, that feels like a great tool to use. So I know you guys spent a fair amount of time on it. But generally, two thoughts. Thank you again for all your work.
All right, thank you. Mr. Duncan, followed by, followed by Vice Mayor Connolly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Bob for your involvement in our council's Economic Development Committee meetings every month and in outside meeting discussions and conversations. The big projects obviously get the headlines as they should. Your Broad and Washingtons and your Tanner Hills and West Broad's and Founder's Rose and so forth. But, you know, we and you are involved in the three yards and a cloud of dust work, too. Even in a pandemic year of 2020, I'm struck by the fact that, you know, we had business openings at a pace that would make most jurisdictions in the Commonwealth, if not America, jealous with openings like Solis Outpost and the new Volvo dealership building and Conti Bikes relocating from the county into the city, Endocrinology Group buying 200 Park Avenue as part of a growing medical use market here in the city. 24-Hour Fitness reopened after being closed. Toy Ness, Dogtopia, Boric G, Turkish Moms Cooking, Johnson's Cafe, and so on. Those, each are stories that are, you know, stories of somebody's dream to build a business sometimes from the very ground up. We've got Preservation Biscuit coming pretty soon, and Go Scramble, the kids' play area, as you know. Those stories are important stories, not only economically for the city, but also to sustain our feeling as a community of being a place that's welcoming to small and medium-sized businesses as well as the larger developments. So thank you for your efforts and your other EDA colleagues in, in building the community's reputation in both regards.
All right, Vice Mayor Connolly.
Mr. Young and everyone on the EDA, I also just want to express my thanks. And other people have said many things, so I will associate myself with them and let you know how much we really do appreciate the hard work you are doing on behalf of the city to make it a better place for business and for people to visit. Thanks.
All right. So I think that's pretty much everybody.
If I can just respond for a minute, Dave?
Yeah.
And then I'll be quiet forever. Well, maybe not. First of all, thank you for all those thank yous. It's very much appreciated. I want to come back just for a moment to the communications. Letty mentioned the the piece of software that we put together that we can't get out anywhere. We can't manipulate our own website. But another part of this whole communication thing is communication with our citizens. You all know better than most all the projects that have been undertaken and completed in the city. Public Works Projects in particular. They never get any publicity. I think we owe it to the citizens to let them know what's going on and especially what we've accomplished. So I hope council, when it takes up budget, will take these kinds of things into consideration. Thanks for all your time. Very much appreciated. We appreciate the accolades. We'll be working hard next year.
All right, before we wrap up this conversation, let me just, Bob, did you just leave? Are you still with us?
I'm with it.
All right, so let me just follow up on two comments you just made. One about the web, you know, the website, you don't control your own website. What does that mean?
Means just what I said. We're not permitted to add things, subtract things. That's all handled by the Office of Communications, which as far as I can tell, is heavily overloaded with many other things. Social media is not a priority, as far as I can tell, certainly ours isn't. We, you know, we have, as you know, a weekly newsletter. I don't know how many people get it, but it appears to me that Letty's weekly newsletters on Friday mornings reach a lot more people and probably are a lot more effective in letting people know what, what's going on. I'm not sure that that's the right way for the city to be doing it.
So with respect to the specifics of what you just said, do you, you saying you don't have control over your portion of the city website? Do you seek that, or do you just seek someone in staff to implement what you want to do on the website?
Well, it would be great to have somebody on staff, but if we could just get access ourselves, we, we can easily find people who can do that, including people on staff. Specifically, we hope Naomi. But we think it's a much bigger problem and ought to be attacked in that manner. Communications, you know, these days, an increasing part of our population are folks who work almost exclusively with social media. You know, how's our Instagram account doing, folks? How about our Facebook account? I got to tell you, it's just pathetic. And I think it's critically important to economic development and generally to the city's communications.
All right, I agree with you, Bob, and I'll tell you, it's that last mile. You know, you can do 99% of what you need to do, but then you don't communicate it effectively, or you don't do the final, you know, that last mile of communication or outreach or interaction. And I'm sure, I know it's frustrating both to you and others as well. Mr. Shields, what, what say you as to what you've heard just now?
So I, it is a, I think, probably lots of dimensions to it, but it's fundamentally a resource issue. The EDA website was built by EDA staff when we had the marketing staff member for the EDO, and we don't have that position anymore. So I think that's probably a fundamental issue. So it's a huge topic. I probably won't go on about it, but we could, we can schedule time in the future to discuss it.
I mean, I know you've heard this before from others as well about trying to up the game as far as the city's communication goes. And, and so I think it would be worthy of, of a more in-depth conversation. We've just heard from the folks who specialize in economic development, and I, I think many of us also feel the same way that we really can do better or should do better or find a way to do better. So maybe we can table that for a different day, but in the near future, maybe have a more in-depth conversation about how we as a city, particularly as relates to economic development more broadly, can communicate more effectively.
All right, Mr. Young, we thank you very much. Appreciate it, and I know we'll be hearing more from you coming up here soon. Let's move on to council requests. Are there any council requests? All right, let's move on to the report of the city manager, Mr. Shields.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, before, before we go on, I did want to respond to a couple of the citizen comments that we received, particularly on the, the school reopening. Do we have any fresh information about that? Is that an issue that's been resolved yet, or is it still out there?
Is your question relating to the budget or to the school's plans themselves?
We received a number of public comments requesting that council address the issue. I mentioned those comments two weeks ago, and I think the citizens deserve a comment from us. I'm sure that the schools have responded, and I'm just trying to find out what the school response has been, whether the citizens, the issues that they've raised have been resolved, or they're still out there and the request for us to take action. Mostly, my concern is that I want to make sure that, that we are providing the schools all the resources and budgetary support they need to reopen as safely and rapidly as possible. So, and we may come to that later on, but I guess my question is, a number of citizens have written to us, they've been very strong messages, and I'm trying to figure out if their issues have been resolved or they're still out there. And I'm trying to figure out if their issues have been resolved or they're still out there and it's something that city council needs to do other than just indicate reception of the comments.
Well, I don't know. From my perspective, I'm not sure what there is to say. I don't know if there's resolution or not. I mean, to my understanding, there is a date for the schools to reopen, which is coming up later this month. I don't have the exact date at the top of my head, but it's later this month. Whether that's satisfactory to people or not, I believe there are choices. You know, you can choose to have your kids continue virtual learning, a hybrid learning. There are several choices parents elect. And to my understanding, that's a decision fully in the school's, the school board and the superintendent's bailiwick, not ours. So I'm not sure what else there is to say as to resources. I think we will hear later on about an additional request from the schools for CARES money. But I'm sure there's anything else I have to add. I don't know if Mr. Shields has anything or Vice Mayor Connolly with her work in the schools that she would like to add. Vice Mayor Connolly?
I can just add that the schools have announced to all parents and staff that the second vaccine for staff will be next Monday, which is President's Day, the 15th, giving a week for the vaccine to take effect. Schools will switch to hybrid mode Monday, the 22nd, with the first day on campus Tuesday, the 23rd. And then all students will be offered the option of attending hybrid, which I believe elementary school is four morning sessions or four afternoon sessions per week. And high school, secondary school is two full days per week. So the teachers will be teaching half of their class in person and half of their class online at the same time using ABRA cameras, which is definitely some very futuristic progressive equipment that teachers are able to teach both in school and at home at the same time. We didn't have that technology before the pandemic. Some of the letters from the parents are requesting that the schools open five days a week for everyone quickly thereafter. And I think Dr. Newman is going to address some of those concerns tomorrow at the school board meeting. But my understanding of it is that right now there's, we're going to make sure that the hybrid mode works, that transportation works, that food services works, that we can get kids in and out of school, learning to the best of their ability, and see what happens. So there, you know, the parents that have sent us letters want everyone to open five days a week right away. And I think the schools are taking a more cautious look at that and saying, let's do what works now. We haven't been opened in almost a full year, which is a long time. And we haven't been open in a pandemic ever. So we want to make sure we can get as many kids into the classroom safely as possible. I think part of the problem with having all kids in school is that there isn't enough space in the building, in most buildings, to fit every child every single day. So the fact that Falls River Schools is able to open on the 23rd for students is because Dr. Noon impressed so hard with Fairfax Health Department to get the vaccine. And we're the only school division where every staff member has been able to be vaccinated if they so desire. And I think the vast, vast majority have taken advantage of that. So we will be the first school division in Northern Virginia to reopen and hope that it keeps going well. I think one of the concerns is that even once school reopens, there will be cases and there will be a need to pause occasionally here and there. And one of the things the schools have said is that, you know, there will be robust contact tracing and there may be a need to close a classroom or a bus or a certain area of the school where there may have been contacts. And that's just something people are going to have to get used to and understand. So that's another reason why it makes sense to start in hybrid and just see how it goes. And it really is a community responsibility. You know, we're not going to be able to be open and stay open if there are huge outbreaks throughout the community. So I think that's really good news. I think definitely some, I've responded to most of the people who sent us letters and a lot of them feel very strongly that they really would like their kids in school more than they are being offered at the moment. And everyone's doing the best that they can.
Hey, can I ask a follow-on question to that, Mary Beth, since you seem to have a pretty good grasp on where the schools stand with this? And this is further to Dave's comment. So that's the second or third time that I've heard this in the last week about this question of space. And I was going to ask this question as it relates to this CARES Act funding that's coming out. So it's, at least as I understand it, the concern is not having adequate space. So I guess further to Dave's question, what resources does council need to consider to get that space? And I guess my broader question is, it would be helpful to know as we deliberate the CARES Act funding as well as upcoming budget conversations, what exactly the schools need, meaning specifically, not just more space, but what is it, amount of square footage, so we can go out and make that happen? Because if that is the, what I'm hearing, the primary hurdle, if not the sole hurdle from a resource perspective, I'd like to be prepared to solve that problem. So does anybody have a plan or details that they can bring to council so we can solve for that issue as opposed to just this kind of nebulous idea of needing more space without knowing what that is? Because yes, we can't technically go in and operate the schools, but we can help solve for a problem with space if that is what is being put out there as the problem. Do we know what that is?
Yeah, I'll give you just one example. There's a lot of different examples. But one of them is if a kindergarten class has 20 kids and the teacher has 10 kids in the classroom, you can accommodate a classroom with 10 kids. But then, so they're there at alternating times. But all of a sudden, when you're going to fit 20 kids into a kindergarten classroom with teachers, then that's more than you can safely distance six feet apart throughout the classroom. So then the question is, do you, could you find another space for those kids? But then who's the teacher? Because we only have a certain number of teachers. So it's that kind of capacity issue where you could indeed find a spot for every kid at Mount Daniel to sit in Mount Daniel Elementary School with six feet of space around them. But then how do you get them lunch and how do you feed them? And how do you make sure that they're all safe and learning? Because the actual classrooms just won't hold 22 people. Does that make sense? So that's one of the issues. Another issue is, well, in the summer that we were talking about maybe being able to move people around and use the cafeterias for classroom space. Again, that could happen, but it's just a matter of figuring out how many people we're going to have. How many parents want to have their kids back five days a week? How many, so we need to know how many people that's going to be. And again, who's going to teach them if we need to separate them out and move them around? So it's a logistical thing. And I think, yeah, there has to be a lot more study and look at that. And I think once the schools do open, we will know better exactly how many kids are coming back and how they fit in the buildings and how they rotate through classrooms. Does that make sense?
It does. Yeah. I mean, I feel like between para and teachers, we could, even if it's not an ideal situation, we could deal with that. But not to digress back into the details of the operations, but I'm thinking beyond the schools. So from a space perspective, if we've got the resource, teachers, paraprofessionals, whoever, we need to look for resources, whether it's leasing space, opening up the community center. And we have a brand-new library that's delivering this summer, thinking beyond that. And then, again, this is just further information that I would like and maybe why you can relay this to the schools as it relates to our budget. But a lot of these folks that have written in, it's not just about getting people back five days a week. There are folks that are looking to make up for the lost education over the last year and then required about resources over the summer for all kids. And I haven't, and maybe that's something that'll be announced tomorrow or maybe it'll be discussed over the next couple of weeks. But I want to go beyond thinking about just having this kind of general broad idea of resources and try to solve this problem as soon as possible, to go beyond, you know, just thinking about the immediate infrastructure that we have. Because I feel like we can solve these issues, but we need to have the information and data to be able to do that. And I'd personally like to have that as soon as possible from the schools on what they need specifically.
Right. I do think though, Ross, that some of those specifics are hard to know until you actually have this kids in the school trying to figure out. So for example, this morning I was at the middle school and I was a volunteer in the gymnasium. And there were 46 graders who came to the middle school and they brought their computers and they set up for virtual learning. They were all spaced out on the bleachers. The school had put out stickers so that all of those kids would have a space that was six feet apart from everybody else and they would be safe. And it went pretty well. But the kids sat down and then a couple of them said to me, is this where we're staying all day? Don't we get to do anything else? And then they were in different class, you know, they were doing their own different virtual classes. So logistically, it worked okay. And they were really happy to be there and they could kind of wave to their friends across. And it was their very first day in middle school. So, you know, they weren't quite sure what to expect anyway. And I think it did go well, but then you look at the logistics and go, oh, wait. Next time we have to do this a little better and, oh, we have to make sure that there's a cushion on the seat because, you know, it's hard to sit on the bleachers all day long or whatever it is. So I think those logistics, as we bring kids back in these smaller groups, we're really going to see those and be able to go, oh, okay, that's something we hadn't thought of. Let's make sure we cover that for the next thing. Or, yeah, we do need space in the gym, extra space for PE class. So we can't, you know, we can't put all those kids in the class, in the PE room all day long because we want to make sure we have kids that can use the gym. So I think those kind of things, you can make lots and lots of plans, but until you have the human beings in the space and seeing how they interact and what works, I think that that will be the next step. And that will start February 23rd. So I think that it'll be a good chance to get a review of data and see how things are going.
Okay.
But I understand what you're wishing for. And I also know that the governor is talking about additional funding for summer school. Right, Mr. Tarter? You heard that earlier?
Yeah, he is. He is.
So that is also something that may be available. And I'm sure the schools are taking a look at that as well.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I think folks are just looking for a plan. I mean, the kids have been out of school for almost a year. And so I understand some of it is going to be on-the-job training, so to speak, when we get kids back. But, you know, I feel like we probably need to present them with clear details and a plan because it's not like the kids have just been out of school recently. We've had a year to deal with this. And I think that our constituents deserve more details than what they're getting right now. So I'll leave it at that.
All right.
There's also information from the new Secretary of Education at the state level about encouraging budget at the state level to be for testing. Right now, we can't do our own testing. The Fairfax County Health Department and the state don't, and VDOE don't support individual school districts testing. So the new Secretary of Education is pushing for funding through that, through this next bill. And I think that is, will be incredibly helpful for getting our students, more students back in school and containing the deposit, keeping us from having to pause too frequently. So I'd like, I look forward to seeing more information on that too from the state level that's been tying our hands.
So, Mr. Mayor, Dave Snyder, just a final comment. I want to thank all the council members who have commented. And I just wanted to let the folks know that have written to us that we are paying attention, we are listening, we are working as hard as we possibly can to adjust all this. We appreciate the concerns of the parents, but we also think that teachers really want to teach and administrators really want to administer buildings filled with students. So finding the right course forward is what we're all trying to do. And my hope was that this conversation would illustrate that. And finally, in conclusion, let me say the obvious thing. The thing about COVID is that it is a thing. If it does not respond to what we think, desire, or need, it can only be defeated by action. And again, thanks for this conversation this evening. And we'll be following it up to see what else we need to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to all the members of council who have commented.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to the report of the city manager, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just do a couple of rapid-fire updates for the city council. The first is the good news. The Big Chimneys Park is open. We are inviting the public back into that park after a long construction period. We will be doing promotion of that opening. We're putting together a video. It will be a virtual opening ceremony for the park. And we'll be promoting that. But I do just want to thank Danny Schlitt for all of his work to get us through the design process with the community, the Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board, and our project manager, Alastor G., who managed this construction project. So welcome to the public to Big Chimneys Park. It's a wonderful new addition to the city. On South Washington Street, the construction there for the pedestrian improvements and the traffic signal changes and the Intermodal Plaza is proceeding with construction into a next phase this week. We'll have lane closures on Hillwood Avenue as we're continuing the work there. We're also pouring concrete on the sidewalks along the business frontages on the north side of Route 29. And once that concrete is down, then we can come back in behind to lay down the bricks and the tree planters, et cetera. So the more visible parts, the more visible improvements to that project are really starting to come together. The Stormwater Task Force is hard at work. They're meeting on the 11th of February, on the 24th of February, and on the 11th of March. And then they plan to make their presentation to the city council on March 22nd on their recommendations for some of the green infrastructure and other alternative ways to improve stormwater in the city. The council's already approved the Capitol Improvements Program for the major conveyance upgrades. And the focus of the task force now is on that second phase of work at the direction of the city council. So we're looking forward to their report to the city council on March 22nd. The CIP was presented by Deputy City Manager Cindy Mester to the Planning Commission last week. All of the proposed CIP documents can be found on the city's webpage. And that also will be presented to the city council come March 8th, when the overall budget is presented to the city council. But that's our key way to plan for the future and all of the infrastructure and facilities that we're looking forward to in the next six years through that CIP process. DPW, our Robert Goff, as the council knows, has announced his retirement this summer. And we have put out a recruitment for his replacement. Big shoes to fill, obviously, but I did want to just note that, that that recruitment is out. And so if anyone who's watching is interested in that position or if you know people who have the qualifications to run our very important operations divisions for Department of Public Works, please let us know and encourage people to apply. And then lastly, I'll just touch on vaccine. Vaccine is the top-rated, or top piece of information on the city's webpage and the top feature of our bi-weekly COVID updates that we put out to the public, either through the eFocus or through the COVID updates that we put out each week. In terms of the key things for people to know, the links on the city's webpage and in those public communications have the instructions on what you need to do if you wish to schedule your appointment, if you are currently in that eligible group of either being older than 65 or have an underlying health condition that puts you to the top of the priority list under the CDC's rules. I would also just note that we've done hand flyers as well and we've distributed those hand flyers to populations that we know, you know, like Winter Hill and other places where we know that people need that information and might not be accessing it through digital means. Those are a series of updates. I'd be happy to stop there and see if there are any questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Shields? We've got a few. Mr. Snyder, followed by Mr. Duncan.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wyatt, thank you for the work that we're all trying to do on the vaccines. So I'm aware of some of our citizens clearly fitting into the older aid categories that have notified Fairfax Health and have gotten nothing back in almost a month. I read conflicting information about the adequacy of the manufacturer of the vaccines. Clearly, it's unsatisfactory. I mean, that's no surprise. So what are the next steps that this council ought to take? And I know Mayor Tarter has been working And I know, uh, Mayor Tarter has been working on this and Vice Mayor Connolly, but what additional steps? I plan to raise it at the Council of Governments Board of Directors again. Um, where's the, um, I'll try to say something printable here. Where's the problem, um, with getting adequate vaccines out to our citizens and are the communications issues fixed, um, with regard to folks who are in categories that, um, are eligible but are, are not being communicated with? So, uh, again, it's, it's not in any sense a blame on city staff or this council, but I'm trying to figure out what else we can do about this. Thank you.
So just, uh, uh, a couple of notes in response. Um, you know, fundamentally, what the issue is, is a scarcity of supply. Uh, but that scarcity of supply in the early days of this vaccine rollout was not quite that, you know, there are a couple of, of things that I think state policymakers did not fully, um, understand when the vaccine was first being rolled out. Uh, two pieces of, of, uh, bad data. One, they, I think they were told by the federal government that they, the federal government was, uh, had a stockpile that it would be releasing with a, a significant increase in, in vaccine. Uh, that, of course, proved not to be the case. And then the second thing that they were, uh, you know, sort of bad information they were laboring under is because of the lags of reporting from the hospitals and from the, the public health, uh, systems around the state through the, uh, uh, through the reporting system, there was an impression that was created that, uh, that, uh, the vaccine was sitting on shelves and not getting into people's arms. And this is really kind of the situation of about four weeks ago. And so the state greatly expanded the eligibility of, of, uh, of people who could get the vaccine, uh, to the 1B group, and that overwhelmed, uh, the communication systems that had been set up for a, a more gradual ramp up. That's the short story of a complicated tale that's caused a lot of frustration. Uh, the bottom line is, uh, there's a backlog of 150,000 people who are registered in the Fairfax County Health District. And, uh, Fairfax County is currently on a pace of about 18,000 vaccinations, uh, in, in a week. So, uh, sort of put those two numbers in context, 150,000 people registered, uh, clearing about 20,000 a week now. We do, I think everybody is hoping that that, uh, that more vaccine will be available and those numbers will grow. And I think incrementally, that is the case. Um, in the meantime, uh, I do think the county is working hard to improve their web portal and at least the complaints that are coming in to my office and directly through, uh, the city's webpage and, and, uh, and, and social media is that the complaints are, you know, they are dropping. As I think particularly two weeks ago and a week ago, there was just a really, a, a lot of difficulty in, in getting the information that you need. And, and it's not perfect, uh, but I do think it is getting better. And I think the state's numbers, um, you know, across the board, uh, are, are getting, uh, are, are improving.
So let me just follow up. I understand the state wants some sort of a per capita distribution system that's disadvantaged northern Virginia. All I'm trying to do is get to the bottom of what is the problem and where can we collectively or individually strive to do something about it? Cause it's not working for a lot of, and it can never work, it seems to me, as long as vaccines are only available to the public health departments and are not widely available throughout the private sector and healthcare providers. So, anyway, I look forward to anything else that, that we can and should be doing, but it would be good to get a plan and a much more aggressive timeframe than I think seems to be the case now. Thank you very much, Wyatt. Appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Duncan.
Um, I guess my question tracks that a little bit, so I'll not repeat. Um, uh, you know, I've sort of resigned myself to the fact that it's going to be at least two months before, uh, my turn would come up. Um, and that's, you know, just the way it is, I guess. Uh, the challenge is that you just don't have any idea that the, you know, note that you put in a month ago has been received. There was some information from the governor's office, uh, which I read somewhere, I can't remember. I'm reading enough stuff about this, I can't recall, that they were going to fairly soon have, you know, the technological capacity to at least receive a phone call from, uh, people who have registered, uh, who want to know, did you get my registration? And, you know, am I in the month from now or the two months from now category? So as far as those of you who are in meetings where advice is given, I think that, that would be a nice first step if you could just know that you didn't, you know, put the message in the bottle and it's floating out in the ocean and nobody's gotten it yet. Um, so that's one point. Second point is, um, the CVS downtown appears to be doing some sort of a renovation, and I'm wondering, uh, I've, I've read elsewhere that there will be a separate stream of vaccines of being issued, uh, from the CVS stores across the Commonwealth, across the country. And I'm wondering if we have any new information on that or any advice to people, you know, should you put your name in at both places, you know, with Fairfax Health and CVS? Uh, does anybody know anything about that?
Uh, we have been tracking that, and, uh, the CVSs, uh, the last, uh, last we checked do not actually have vaccine yet, but it is on the way. And I think that is going to be a big part of the, the real rollout of the vaccine when, when the numbers really start to grow up. It will, the, um, the pharmacies will be a, a much larger player in the vaccination effort. And, uh, and that always was the plan, that in the early days when vaccine was scarce, that the hospitals and the health departments would be the lead in, uh, getting vaccinations, uh, basically a highly rationed product. But once it, uh, the vaccine was, uh, more prevalent, then you would lose, use mass distributions through the pharmacies. Uh, but at this point, uh, the vaccine doesn't exist, and so the, the pharmacies, pharmacies are not able to ramp up, but that, that will be happening.
Okay.
Yes, just.
Just so we keep in touch with the, the CVS folks here in town, the local folks here might, might turn to that as a, a place to go.
That's right.
Um, I suspect when the Johnson and Johnson vaccine becomes widely available, which looks like it's several weeks off, you'll see that probably going to CVSs because it doesn't require the same sort of, um, ultra freeze that, for example, the Pfizer vaccine, um, does. As to your earlier question too about state rollout, the governor was on the regional call this afternoon, um, and the state has done a soft opening of their, like, regional call center and their regional, or not regional, statewide call center and statewide, um, website. They didn't want to go full bore right at the very beginning, maybe the system would crash. So they're anticipating that to be up and running fully next week. So I would just stay tuned on that front. Um, it looks like from best weekend here, there is not an imminent increase in the amount of vaccines that's going to be available for at least the next couple of weeks. I think the Johnson and Johnson product, uh, when that becomes available, it will be a, uh, figurative and literal, a shot in the arm for the, um, for the process, but that's just not there yet.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Hardy?
Great, thank you. Um, while we're on CVS, I think I read that not every CVS is going to get vaccines, and so they're allocating it based on kind of equity and making sure it was distributed across the state. Um, so, uh, stay tuned, I guess, basically, for citizens who may be watching. I think not every CVS around will have it. Um, Dave, you mentioned the state website and registration system. One of the questions I've already fielded is, it's good that the state's going to roll out kind of a centralized system, hopefully is better than what we've had to date, but people won't want to reregister, or at least have a question of whether they'll need to reregister. So that would be good to get out in communications of whether all the information in the existing health department systems does transfer to the state one. Otherwise, you're going to have people calling the call centers, confused what to do. Um, along the lines of communication, so in general, I do agree that things have at least settled down a bit compared to two weeks ago, but I do continue fielding questions about kind of priority of city residents versus, uh, the greater county. And so I think Wyatt, to the extent that, you know, as we continue communicating about vaccines, continue emphasizing that city residents are treated equally and served equally, um, in that kind of 150,000 long queue, it's not like we're going to be last in line. I think that's helpful and reassuring to our citizens. Um, and then my last request around communication is, um, I really appreciate the weekly emails that we get around COVID, um, but I would like to think that we can actually transition to, um, using positivity rate and per capita vaccination rates rather than raw numbers. Because I think as the numbers get bigger, they just mean less. Uh, and I think using positivity rate and actually per capita vaccination rate might be a better way to actually monitor where we are in the city than absolute raw numbers, which we've done for the past 11 months now.
Yeah, those numbers should be available, I mean, as well. I mean, I don't know what numbers we're using as the city to push out, but the, the, those, those rates are available.
Yep, and I look at them every week, but I know that in the city, we've been reporting, and when the, when the numbers were small, you know, it was helpful, but now they're big enough that I think using positivity and per capita vaccinations are more helpful indicator.
Got it.
Yep. Thank, thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments regarding the city manager's report? All right, why don't we move on to business on the agenda? Madam Clerk?
Yes. Thank you. We have some resolutions and first readings of ordinances. The first one is TR 21 dash 01, Resolution to Endorse the City of Falls Church Fiscal Year 2022 to 2027 Application for Regional Surface Transportation Program, RSTP funds.
Mr. Shields?
Well, thank you. And Mr. Bradley's on the call, and Caitlin Sobsey's on the call as well. I'm not sure which one of you wants to handle this item.
I'll take it, Wyatt.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, so tonight, uh, staff is making the recommendation to adopt TR 21 dash 01. Uh, this is, this, uh, resolution is for council to endorse the application that city staff submitted back in January for RSTP funding. Uh, the RSTP funding amount was $550,000, um, and it can be used for any of our CIP projects, uh, that either repair or improve pedestrian bicycle bridge or traffic calming facilities throughout the city. And the funding that was applied for will be available in FY '27. Um, so even though this is a six-year CIP, that is the funding year that the 550,000 up, I should clarify, up to 550,000, uh, will be awarded. Uh, the funds are, or the application is submitted to NVTA, uh, who makes the recommendation to the CTB, who ultimately determines the actual distribution and actual funds allotted. Um, so again, we've requested 550,000. Um, we don't always get that much, but we have always gotten something, um, since 2013. So, uh, let's see, since 2013, uh, we've requested between 300,000 and 550,000 every year. Again, we've, we've always been awarded, um, a significant amount. I believe last year's award, uh, was just a little over $400,000, um, just to give you an idea of how much we do get. And, uh, again, you know, the, these funds are used for anything pedestrian related, sidewalks, crosswalks, uh, there could be cyclists, um, and traffic calming, uh, projects.
I think that's.
Yes.
I think that's it, right?
It is. Uh, just one more note.
Okay.
Um, the timing, we are requesting action tonight. Uh, council does have to endorse the application by February 19th, uh, but other than that, that is it.
All right. Any questions, comments? Do we have a motion? We do have a question?
Yeah, we should adopt TR 21 dash 01.
All right, do we have a second?
Snyder, seconds.
All right, so Ms. Hardy on the motion and Mr. Snyder on the second. We've got a couple of comments before we take those. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
There is not.
All right. Uh, Mr., let me just see, uh, Vice Mayor Connolly, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just have a quick question for Mr. Bradley. And the last couple of years, Ms. Hardy has done such a great job of leading the community charge to get public comment to support some of our grant applications. And I know these are a bit in the future, but are there any of these that will require community support to be able to get through? That same kind of letter writing and public comment?
Uh, I, I will defer to, uh, Ms. Sobsey on that one. I am not 100% sure on that.
Yeah, Zach, I can let you know, for RSTP funds, um, we don't typically take public comments. The funds are, uh, estimated on a per capita basis, so, um, the city sort of just gets the amount that they get. Last year, uh, like Mr. Bradley said, we received $434,000, and we also requested $550,000 that year. Um, so we don't typically submit public comments for this. Um, it's their federal funds allocated through the state. We will be, um, uh, accepting and submitting some public comments, um, for one of our next, uh, pending grant applications, which is the Smart Scott application for the South Washington bus stop expansion.
That's great. Thank you, Ms. Sobsey.
All right, any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you go ahead and, uh, take the vote here?
Yes. Ms. Connolly? Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shans Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, counsel.
All right, will you call the next item?
I will. I can find it.
And while you're doing that, after this next item, we'll take a short break, if that's all right with everyone, a short recess, uh, to recharge and, and the like, and come back after that. So let's go ahead with this item, though. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have TR 21 dash 03, Resolution Providing Direction to the City Manager on the Allocation of Broad and Washington Project Voluntary Concessions to Affordable Housing.
All right, uh, Mr. Shields, who's handling this?
Um, I'll give a summary, and I believe we do have Nancy Vincent on the, on the call, and she, um, can add to it as well, if anything that I missed. Uh, but with the Broad and Washington project, the city council, um, did negotiate a basket of community benefits, uh, to, uh, all of which have a nexus to that development, uh, to either mitigate impacts of the project or to provide, uh, community benefits. Um, and, uh, principle among those benefits is a voluntary concession of affordable housing. And in that, uh, there were 18 units that were sort of the base case of, uh, of an affordable housing contribution from this project. Um, of those 18 units, nine were to be affordable for people making 40% of area median income, and those would be studio efficiencies. And, uh, and nine more would be, uh, two-bedroom units for people or households at 60% of the area median income. In addition to that, there's a, an, an option within the voluntary concessions that were proposed by Insight Development Corporation, in which, uh, there could be up to 10% of the units of, of the project could be made, uh, affordable. Um, but, uh, to do so, there'd be a trade-off of some of the other cash profers that were also offered in the voluntary concessions. So what this resolution does is direct staff to, uh, seek 15 additional affordable units, uh, efficiencies at 60% AMI, so that, uh, overall, the project will have 10% of the units would be, um, of, at, at some level of affordability, uh, below market rate, and, uh, provides further direction that, uh, the, uh, sort of the purchase of those units, if you will, would come from the voluntary concessions, uh, VC number six, which was, uh, the, uh, uh, an offer of $2.298 million for school capital costs, and VC number 13, which is $153,000 for library costs. If, uh, if the council acts on this resolution, and, uh, and that is the plan that we follow, there still will be $87,000 of voluntary concessions, uh, between VC six and VC 13, which, uh, would be split between those two uses. So that's a quick overview of the resolution and what it does. The timing for this is, you know, we would, uh, convey this immediately to the developer, but the, uh, then staff would ensure that that is reflected in the site plan documents, which are expected sometime this summer, probably in the June timeframe, when, uh, when the site plan will be submitted. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and, uh, Ms. Vincent, uh, our Housing Human Services Director is also on the call, and if I missed anything, I hope she will. is also on the call, and if I missed anything, I hope she will make note of it.
I do want to, I'm, excuse me.
Go ahead, please.
I do want to clarify that the 15 additional studio units would be affordable to households at 80% of the area median.
Okay. Thank you for that correction. I had said 60%. It will be at 80%. That's right.
All right, thank you very much. We've got a few comments here, Mr. Duncan being first, followed by Mr. Littenhouse.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Just a question about the $87,000. So that's what's left over, as you said, Mr. Manager. Looking at the cost of a 80% AMI studio unit being $157,000, so does that mean we're only, if we apply that $87,000, we'd only be $70,000 short of having another AMI 80% studio unit? Is, am I doing my math right? I mean, what I'm trying to get at here, as I think most people know, who've talked with me about this, is, you know, a true 10%. There's 339 units in the building in total, and so a true 10% actually would be 34, not 33. 33 is great, don't get me wrong, but we're just tantalizingly close to being able to do 34 and a true 10%. Is my math right, at least, as to the merits of the suggestion? I'll leave it to others' thoughts, but is my math correct, Mr. Manager?
Your math is correct.
Okay, well, I would, I would like for folks to comment, at least on the possibility, that we arrange this so that we can get that 16th unit and get a true 34, 10%, which would be a good, a great marker for this project, I think. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Littenhouse, followed by Ms. Connolly.
Well, I had a great idea until I heard Phil. I was actually going to suggest that that money go towards the Stormwater Fund to offset the expected fee increase in a couple of years. I'm still very, very concerned about what is a little further down the road, and so every dollar we can put towards that obligation, I would like to do that. But Councilman Duncan, that is also a worthy idea.
All right, Vice Mayor Connolly, followed by Ms. Hardy.
Thanks, Mayor Charter. Mr. Shields, my question on this one, just as a follow-up to my request when we discussed this at work session last week, which is, is that, can you make, can we put up on the website and make a public document of how we have received and used voluntary concessions in every project that we've had them? So that people who are looking at this for this project, as well as the next project, and the one after that, understand the arc of how we have received voluntary concessions, what we have used them for, why we have used them for certain things at certain times, and what kind of funding we still have available or are expecting from projects like Founders' Row? So that the next time we have a project presented to us, there'll be this whole history of voluntary concessions available for community members, as well as the developer proposer, to see what has happened in the past and what we expect from them in the future. I think that would also go a long way to explain to the community that we're not taking money from budgets, we're actually just allocating the money within the CIP in a way that meets overall city plans.
But yes, that document will be a living document, and will be available, and we'll keep it updated.
That's great. I think that's really important, just for community education, so that people can find it, understand it, because it takes a while to understand, so it's good to have it there and accessible. Thanks.
All right, Ms. Hardy, followed by Mr. Snyder.
Thank you. A request for staff, so I think it's in our resolution, but assuming that this passes tonight, if we can have a specific action to figure out how we prioritize some of these units for teachers or general government employees, I think it's kind of called out in lines kind of 82 to 85, but I think there's probably some lessons learned on how we've administered the programs in the past, and I want to make sure that we learn from that going forward.
And I would defer to Ms. Vincent on that question.
So, so there is an affordable dwelling unit policy that sets out what the priorities will be, and the priorities are, our first, folks who live or work in the City of Falls Church with seniors and people with disabilities coming to the, rising to the top of that list. And then the next priority would be for folks outside of the City of Falls Church. And there, there is not, for the affordable dwelling unit program, a specific priority for teachers or for staff who work for the City of Falls Church, but rather at any business in Falls Church. There are specific teacher workforce units at the Reed Building that do give that priority. There are nine, nine apartment homes there that give priority to teachers, to school staff, and to city government staff. So we do have experience with both, but in general, the affordable dwelling unit program is more general towards city residents and any city employee.
So I guess what I would request, then, is let's understand what the demand might be from teachers and general government employees, and then potentially add that, I guess, preference in the affordable dwelling program, similar to how we have the teacher workforce unit program. Thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
Sure, thank you. So, the, the issue of affordable housing is not a new issue for me. I've worked on it for many decades, and I always look forward to how we can get more of it consistent with our other pressing city needs. I started talking about, and with other council, at least one other council member last fall, about raising our expected number from 6% to 10% with new development projects. My view had always been that that would be in addition to other VCs, and I would note that school capital costs are well documented and well justified, and that money will be needed for the schools, and it all comes out of the taxpayers' pockets. But to get back to the major point here, I had always, my preference had always been that we not rob Peter to pay Paul, that we would add this on and use our leverage with developers. Two weeks ago, I made an attempt to achieve that objective, to build this as an additional, that is, the increase in affordable dwelling units over and above the VCs. That motion failed to get a second and was never debated. The die then was cast by those actions two weeks ago. So while this is not my preferred approach, I think that we should demand more of affordable dwelling units, but not at the cost of school capital costs and other VCs going forward. I even suggested it as part of the response to Mill Creek's proposal at Founders' Row, their, their issues that they raised with us, that also failed to get support. So I want folks to understand that, yes, I support increase in affordable dwelling units. This is not at all my preferred or desirable approach to, to funding them. I think we had other opportunities that, that were not taken. That's my view. So I will probably be voting for this, this resolution, but with some reluctance and the hope that in the future, we can be better negotiators. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment as to this matter?
I have not received any public comment.
All right. Mr. Duncan, did you have another comment?
Did not. I just want to know when we're going to make a motion, because I'd like to offer some thoughts on the motion.
All right, well, I think now would be the time to make a motion. Someone like to make a motion? Someone, and Phil?
I would like to, if I may.
Of course.
I would like, I would like to move to adopt TR 21-03. And I would like to conclude in that note, in that motion, that VC number six and VC number 13, the process, VCs, in total, for the ADU component of this deal, and that if that amount of money falls short of being able to purchase, to use the phrase that was employed earlier, a 16th studio at 80% AMI, that council authorize use of up to, but not to exceed $70,000, from the proceeds of the city parking lot into the ADU component of the deal.
All right, before we, do we have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
All right, and Mr. Shields, that's what Mr. Duncan just proposed is consistent with the site plan, or not the site plan, I'm thinking Arlington, the VCs associated with our special exception, correct? They don't exceed the amount in any form that's in the voluntary concessions?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Shall we go through the vote?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, I missed the middle of Mr. Duncan's motion because of audio. I got the end, I got the end part, I just didn't get the midsection, after VC number six and VC number 13.
Okay, apply VC six and 13 fully into the ADU component of the deal.
Okay. That's what I missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are we ready to go to a vote?
Mayor, I just had, wanted to offer a comment.
All right, go ahead.
I wanted to refer to the matrix, I don't know if it's linked in the staff report, but I think it was in our last package, but the new report that the EDO had put out that kind of showed the history of voluntary concessions and compared the Broad and Washington concessions were receiving, or received, compared to the historical ones. And so while we can always do better, I thought that was actually a really helpful document, because essentially, the sum of it was that what we're getting in Broad and Washington is probably the richest mix and largest contributions in VCs across the board. So while we can always do better, I do want to make sure that people understand that we are getting a lot from this project. And while everything, you know, there are a lot of priorities in there, I think it is our job to make trade-offs, because otherwise, if everything is a priority, then nothing is a priority. So I do think it's appropriate for us that we do turn our attentions with the VCs that we're getting that are very generous, to areas that have received a lot of attention to date, and really move it towards affordable housing.
Thank you.
Mayor, you're muted.
I would, I don't know if Mr. Duncan has his hand up or not, but I, I guess I would just agree as well, and note that mixed use in some of the development we've done over these past years has allowed us to provide so many services to our community, and so many benefits to our community. The affordable housing that will be provided in this project, that I'm, that I'm happy to support because it's the right thing to do, is just one of the many examples. And we haven't even got to the store being opened yet, so there's so many things that development has brought to this community these past years, and so many more things to make this a complete and vibrant downtown. I'm very excited about this project, but the possibility of having increased affordable housing and raising the bar in that area is one that I think is very exciting for our community. But Mr. Duncan, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, I just wanted to thank you for your comments, and Ms. Hardy's, and say that in the long and checkered history of an attempt to bring affordable housing downtown, you know, going back 20 years ago, there was a proposal to use this very property, part of it, for a parking deck and two stories of affordable housing above it. So it's taken us 20 years to get back to, you know, fulfilling that vision that we had then. And the key ingredients in being able to accomplish that were that we had to meet other needs. I mean, we just did. That's what, that's what I learned from past councils that were reluctant to support affordable housing. You know, we had needs for schools, and library, and parks, and city hall, and I'm proud to say that you all on council have met all those needs. There's certainly more to come, but those need, those needs have been aggressively met in recent years. And then the second thing we had to do is drive a hard bargain in these mixed-use projects. And as the mayor said, we have, and the vice mayor also, we've gotten millions, tens of millions of dollars of proffers in multiple areas, because we have driven a hard bargain with developers, and we continue to do that with this project. And because of our ability to do that, we now find ourselves in a position to accomplish this very important goal, which is to bring affordable housing in very meaningful numbers to our downtown. That's just the start of big things, you know? We've got the Atlantic proposal, and Southwest, West Broad, and West Falls Church, this marker down, that I think future councils will be able to use as a starting point for their negotiations with applicants who bring proposals for major developments to the city. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, well, let's go ahead to the vote, unless there's any other comments to be had. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shance Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we've been at it about two hours, and I suggest we take a short recess and then get back at it for the rest of our agenda. You may recall that we do have a closed session tonight as well, so we do have a fair amount of work to go, but it's now 9:26. I propose we get back together at, how about we say, 9:32? So let's give ourselves a full five minutes, 9:32, if we can, okay? All right, we'll reconvene then.
Okay, thanks.
Are we, so we're back live?
Yes.
All right, welcome back, everyone. We're reconvening after a short recess. Thank you for your patience and indulgence. Madam Clerk, why don't you go ahead and call the next item, then?
Sure. We have TO 21-02, Ordinance to amend, nope, I skipped one. I knew this was the wrong one. Excuse me, let me start over. We have TO 21-01, Ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify Chapter 14, Environment, Article 3, Noise of the Code of the City of Falls Church, to remove provisions defining violations as those that disturb a reasonable person, create an exception for small power equipment operation during daytime, and allow longer daytime hours in commercial and industrial districts.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Shields, who's going to do the staff report?
So what we'll do is, I think, if I could just say a few words by introduction, we do have Captain Steve Rao on the call, and Chief Gavin, who do have information just about the numbers and how we go about enforcing this right now, which I think would be helpful to, some council members have asked these questions. We've gotten a lot of public comment on this ordinance, and we also have Jim Snyder on the call. The EDA did discuss it at their meeting, and I think the Chamber of Commerce also has, is aware of the ordinance, moving through the process. I'll just note, and City Attorney Carol McCoskeri might actually, let me turn it over to you, maybe just to hit the changes we made to the ordinance in response to the work session prior to this meeting, and then from there, go to the police, just for a briefing for the city council on how this ordinance is enforced today, just so we all have that information. The request tonight is just to take first reading on this, and we do expect that we will continue to get public comment on it, and possibly gather some more information, and there could be amendments prior to final action, if council does take first reading tonight. City Attorney McCoskeri, do you want to just review the changes?
Sure, and I will also mention, Jack Villa is on the phone again.
Sure, and I will also mention Jack Villa is on the phone again tonight with us, he's been helping us out. He was going to do a very brief run through of the five standard change, or six standard changes, but we may not get to that tonight, but I think everyone's aware of how helpful he has been. There are two changes that are currently in the version for advertising that you did not see before, but were discussed. First at lines 118 to 120, daytime hours on Friday, Saturday and local holidays in business and commercial districts would be extended to 10:30 PM. Now, I chose that time, there was discussion of a few different times. Understand that it would be important to change that 10:30 PM if you wanted it to be later because otherwise we might have to go back and re-advertise. So if council wants to consider 11:00 PM, then we should, you should just give that direction as part of the motion tonight. That's the first change is to extend those hours for, only in business and commercial zoning districts to allow for the kinds of entertainment that we've been seeing that people want to do. The second change is related to lawn equipment and small power equipment. It's at lines 288 to 290. And it would allow, it creates an exemption for lawn maintenance and small power equipment for up to three hours in any 24-hour period. So this is, this is designed to make sure that people can mow their lawns and blow their leaves out of the way and do their lawn cleanup without concern about violating the noise ordinance. It's the kind of thing that I think has technically been a violation, but is generally not enforced because it's temporary, but this makes that clear. So these are the two changes that we've made since what you saw last time. And I think the police do have some information about violations and how they've been handled and how many there have been in the past. So if, Steve Rao, I don't know if you want to go over those or wide, if you want to handle that?
Listen, oh, go ahead, Chief.
I was going to say, I do have the statistics if you, if, I'll take the statistics and Steve, you can talk about, I guess, enforcement if you'd like. If that's what you want, Wyatt?
Sure, let's go with it.
Okay, so we ran the statistics for the last 13 months to date and overall, the police department has responded to 246 noise complaints. In that time period, or those numbers, 124 of them are residential and then 102 of them are commercial and then there's 20 others. And that would be cars or people passing by locations, not necessarily attached to a certain address. Of course, in the city, we have commercial hotspots. And a lot of these hotspots were born out of, as Steve Rao had suggested last council meeting, was born out of the COVID conditions. And we do have four restaurants that have, we've been to several times. Obviously, the Folster Distillery, which borders a residential zone there, we've gone there 35 times. Leslie's Restaurant there on Hillwood, 11 times, State Theater, four times, and Liberty Barbecue, three times. Those are all loud music calls. In addition to that, in the commercial zones, we have gone to, for instance, the Kensington BJ's and Giant for various different noise violations. And those are typically when people are picking up or dropping off trash, unloading in the early morning hours. And then the Giant has two generator type noise violations. As you move through the city, the other types of complaints that the police department responds to in terms of noise complaints is, throughout the city, some equipment or loading and that usually has to do with construction sites. The women's clinic up at the south, 900 block of South Washington Street. Occasionally, we will get protesters out there with bullhorns and we're called out to that. We've only actually had, that I, that I could see, one called in commercial lawn company that was complained on. And all in all, the residential type complaints are more along the lines of loud parties in homes, car alarms and a handful of barking dogs. Because of the nature of the ordinance and it being, I guess, deemed constitutionally unable to enforce the, what we have done is taken the stance of, when we get a noise complaint, what we typically do is we go to the residence, you know, identify that there is a complaint. We seek compliance and most of the time we do get compliance. You give them verbal warnings. In the past several months, we have been issuing written warnings because we have acquired a noise meter. And so we can measure it and, and the measurements, I'll talk, I'll let Steve pick it up from here in terms of how operations is monitoring the, the community with the noise meter.
So this is Captain Rao, so what we're trying to do with the, with the noise meter is we, we have the matrix, so to speak, that is embedded in the ordinance, in the, in the city ordinance. And that, that lists what we do is for, for continuous sound levels. So what we've tried to do is have, have my officers get knowledgeable on the use of the noise meter and when we're, when we receive noise complaints, I've asked that they take readings from three different locations. So in essence, if they go to the distillery, they'll take a reading across the street. And part of this is that the readings are done across the boundary line such that that's what the ordinance asks. That's what the violation of the law is across the boundary line. So they'll go across the street, they will go to the corner of Tenner in North Washington and they'll go to the corner of Tenner and Maple. And that's just given the example of the distillery and take three different readings. And if, if in fact, recently, if they've been in violation, we've, we've issued written warnings to them knowing, knowing the process that, what we're going through right now. So what I'm trying to do is just so that we're not, we're not taking a reading, what I would say directly in the line of sight of any, of any device emanating music. You know, we're trying to, we're trying to get an overall picture of what we're hearing and what the citizens are hearing. I will put a plug in right now to say that the, with the amount of, of citizen feedback that the council has received, I would, I would ask the citizens that, that when they do call for a noise violation is, that, to meet with us because a lot of times they, they don't want to meet with us. And I think a true reading inside of, inside of a residence or anything like that would be real helpful.
All right, thank you. Why don't we go ahead and open it up to questions? Council comments? Council members? Ms. Hiscott, followed by Ms. Hardy?
Thank you for all that data, that's helpful information. When you have done the more recent, you know, since you've had the decibel reader and you've gone out and taken these tests from multiple sites, you know, is the, I guess I'm looking, thinking about the range we have for acceptable decibel readings, roughly 65 to 85 decibels. There's been concern expressed that that is, could essentially be someone who talks really loudly or, or not, you know, a single drum, if you had outside music, would exceed that decibel reading. And I'm wondering if that's what we found, what you found when you've used the decibel reader out and about in the past couple of months, Captain Rao?
So yes, we have found, we have found that the, that the readings are higher than the, than the permitted 65 or 70, whatever it is at the time. Again, understand someone talking lowly or a single drumbeat at 75 feet is not going to register at 75 decibels. We're not, we're not putting the noise meter right up to an amplified speaker. We're, we're going across the boundary line, wherever that boundary line may be. So they, we have seen them in violation, I would say that as high as, how, 80, probably, probably 80, 85 decibels would be a, a single time, but, but around the 80 range, I would, I would say on some, on some evenings.
Just trying to get an, you know, the number of complaints we've received and the volume versus what our code actually says that acceptable range is. Just heard differing opinions on that, so appreciate your data points there.
Ms. Hardy, followed by Mr. Littenhouse?
Thank, so I think the thing we're trying, we're struggling with is how to balance flexibility for the businesses who are struggling during this pandemic and follow the rules with the ones that don't follow the rules. So Captain Rao, for the calls that you've made, it sounds like about half of them are split roughly between commercial and half are residential calls for service. For the commercial ones, do you find that they are because of decibel level, people saying it's too loud or things are exceeding past the current daytime hours or both?
When it comes to music complaints, I would say mostly it's the, it is the volume of the noise. Now, there's, there's been some debate as to what the, how late they've been allowed to, to operate, okay? Be it nine o'clock or 10 o'clock. But I think a lot of it has to do more so with the volume than with the timeframe.
And when you've had to respond to these service calls, what's the normal kind of procedure? Do you kind of issue the verbal warning and then you might get a callback later on, you might not? Do we have any fines or kind of, how do we step up the enforcement beyond that verbal warning?
Well, the, the next thing would be just, what, what we've done a lot before in the past is, you know, you show up, you give a verbal warning and a lot of times that, that gains the compliance. And, and the, the record of that is just our notes in our computer-aided dispatch, you know? What we've, what, what we have done over the last couple of months is I've asked my people to, at the very minimum, write a written warning, which is, it's, it's just like a summons, but it's a warning, okay? So that we have a, we have a more concrete record of the date, time and, and who we actually issue the, the written warning to. But there, there is no, there's no penalty for a written warning, I guess, is what I can say.
There's no fine, it's not like you get a ticket and you have to pay X amount of dollars because you've gotten a fine for exceeding the decibel levels or going past nine o'clock currently?
No, that, that's, that's where, again, we're warning and we're trying to gain compliance. We're, we're trying to inform and educate and ask, ask these businesses to, to, you know, to be good neighbors to everybody and we're trying to gain compliance.
Got it. Have we had issues with repeated violations? So whether it's the same night or back-to-back nights or one week and then the next week, same thing happens again?
Definitely, we get the, the repeat violations on a, on a weekly basis. We do get some, sometimes in different areas, we get repeat violations on the same night. You know, you show up and, you know, it may, the volume may go down for a bit and they may turn it back up. But I, I don't have that data in front of me and I don't want to speak to it, you know, a lot if I don't have it in front of me.
And I guess the question for both you and maybe the city attorney is, is there anything in our ordinance today that provides for giving us authority to levy fines to be able to step up essentially the enforcement action? So, I mean, speaking in, obviously in the times of COVID, the last thing I want you and your team to do is have to make all these calls for service, right? We don't want you having to interact with members of the public. It's certainly not a great use of your time either, especially, you know, putting you at risk of, you know, getting COVID.
Ms. Hardy, we can actually take a person into custody for violating the noise ordinance as written today, okay? We could theoretically, we could receive a complaint, go down there, see that it's over, over the decibel limit as set. We could issue them a summons, they could say, well, I already got one summons, so let me turn it up again. We could go back there an hour later and by refusing to discontinue the unlawful act, we could actually arrest the, the person responsible for that. We could take him into custody, take him to jail. That is the draconian, you know, answer to, to this, which is, again, we're trying the inform and educate model.
Yeah, and I appreciate that kind of community-based policing where, you know, you want, obviously want to partner with our businesses. But I guess what I'm looking for is somewhere in between, right? So I would hate for you guys to continue having to make these calls out only to, you know, find that you're just getting called back out again. But on the other hand, we're certainly not going to go arrest people for this. So what's in the middle and what does the ordinance provide for that we can actually do better enforcement? Kind of somewhere in the middle between that?
Well, what's in the middle is we can just continue, we can issue them a summons, we don't have to take them to jail. But we would, they, they would be facing a class one misdemeanor charge in court. You know, the lawyers out there all know, I mean, it's the maximum punishment on a class one misdemeanor is a year in jail or a $2,500 fine. That's, that's, that's not what gets levied in court for a first-time offender. But, but the, what it does is issuing a summons actually brings them before, you know, of a judge to, to answer for what's going on.
And I, and I think that, you know, as a natural trajectory, if we had someone who's a repeat violator and we had issued summons after summons and we had gone to court a few times, the fines would probably get higher and ultimately we could seek some injunctive relief to stop a repeated violation as a public nuisance. So that would be the ultimate way to address the problem if it never got fixed. And so I think there are some ways to, you know, the first, as, as Captain Rao has pointed out, the first penalty a court would impose would not be a $2,500 fine and a year in jail. But after someone had violated a couple of times, a court would be more sympathetic to imposing more of that fine for the next violation.
Got it, and out of the 264 noise complaints that the chief quoted, we've never gone so far as to issue a summons, correct?
I do not believe, I, I can't answer that, I, we may have.
See, I will tell you, after reading, after reading all of the 49 pages of them, the only noise ordinance that we have enforced is the trash trucks because we actually caught them in process. And, but for the, and it's actually part of, you know, of course, the ordinance and it's an action part, part of the ordinance. And with the, with the music, one, we were wrangling with changing the ordinance. We didn't get a noise meter and the officers trained up. But no, we have not enforced it, we've given written warnings up until this point.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that up until just a couple of months ago, we would have had to rely on music that disturbs a person of reasonable sensibilities because we didn't have a noise meter. And so we had no way of enforcing decibel levels until that time. But that is the standard that had been determined to be unconstitutional. So that, so, so really, we're looking at, I mean, I think the police department by getting a noise meter has really sort of advanced the city's ability to deal with this issue, you know, manyfold. But it's, that's only been here for a couple of months and we had to get people trained on it as well. And so, so I think that's why the data isn't a little bit more. And so, so I think that's why the data isn't a little bit more developed, because it's really only been a short amount of time where we've had this ability to enforce the decibel levels. And prior to that, the only things we could enforce were something like trash trucks operating outside of the hours they're allowed to operate, because that was not a reasonable person standard and it didn't require a noise meter. So that's, that's why we're operating without a ton of data for you.
Got it. Thank you. Um, so I guess, given all the comments we've gotten, um, so I would support extending the hours, daytime hours until ten PM, because I do think that, you know, like we started this meeting when we talked about how to support businesses, um, that are trying to cope through COVID, I do think that extra flexibility is helpful. But at the same time, I also want to balance hearing residents' concerns with obviously those hotspots that we have in the city and making sure that we are respectful of their, um, their needs too. And I certainly don't want to reward where we have, um, already violations. So I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse, followed by Vice Mayor Conley.
Thanks, Captain Ralph. Um, explain to me again the, the reading of the decibels. Obviously, it's not sixty-five decibels standing next to the person that's playing the music. It's across the property line?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And when you say across the property line, are you literally going to the edge of the parcel of land, standing outside that, that boundary and, and testing for the decibel level?
So what, what I'm having, what I'm having my people do is to, in, in the situation, uh, most situations is to, is to go across the street, okay? So not, not looking to go onto the sidewalk of the, um, of the property of, or of the business in question, okay?
Okay.
So, I mean, that's why we're also encouraging people, I, I mean, inside an apartment building, I, I mean, I know it, it's, you know, they don't always want the police to, to come into their apartment building, but, but having us go in there and having a noise reading from inside their apartment really is kind of what I would say the penultimate of, uh, of readings, you know? So we're, we're, we're not sitting there on the sidewalk. We're actually in a person's house, you know, behind the window, behind the door, you know, behind a glass door, taking a reading to get a real true reading of what, uh, of what people are hearing.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think, um, kind of, my take on this is, you, you know, I, I, I would like to have businesses have the opportunity to provide outdoor entertainment. Uh, I guess where I'm still lost on this, and this thing is, in my mind, become a hot mess, um, for a number of reasons, but I'm still having a difficult time recognizing exactly what is the right decibel level. Obviously, we have an enforcement issue, but I want to make sure that the decibel levels, um, are, are appropriate. One of the things that, uh, you know, I think is, is a challenge here too, is that it's just the way some buildings are situated, meaning if sixty-five decibels read from across a property line is actually reasonable, um, you know, the fact that you've got one business with loud music playing, or just music playing at the appropriate level, facing the broadside of a building with, with windows and not a whole lot of insulation in between, it's going to sound like that music's, uh, in, in your apartment. However, it's not necessarily that the music is actually playing too loud, it's that you've just got buildings that are too close, um, for, for what is allowed. And so that's a bit of a tricky issue there. But I go back to this, this idea that I, I still don't have a good idea of what the appropriate decibel level is based on where, uh, it's being read, but I do know that it, you know, if we've got dozens and dozens of people that are complaining, um, then, then we, we've got an issue and we need to solve that, but I want to make sure that we're not doing it with too heavy of a hand, because I don't want to stymie the ability for businesses, uh, to, to be able to, to open up their, their doors and, and play music. I do agree with extending the hours, but again, I want to make sure that we've got the right decibel level and it's being enforced accordingly. Is there, and this is a question of the city attorney, what is the ob, what is the obligation of a landlord, uh, who has tenants who may be in violation of this noise ordinance?
I would think, I don't know that a landlord would have an obligation, but most leases would require that the tenant be compliant in their operations, be compliant with laws. And so, um, most landlords would be able to, um, take some action.
Yeah, I, I think that that's important to note, because as the, as the city densifies, uh, and, and we've got more buildings popping up, I think it's important for landlords to understand, and whether this comes through the cham, the Chamber of Commerce, comes from development planning, that landlords need to understand that they also have a responsibility, uh, as it relates to the businesses that are putting in there, to be, um, upfront with them about the expectations, uh, and their compliance with the laws, and not just, you know, open it up to folks that are expecting to operate their business one way when, when they didn't know. Um, so I'd like for, for, for that to get out there as well. Uh, and then, um, finally, did, did the chamber weigh in on this issue? I know the chamber members have, but has the chamber formally weighed in on this?
Mr. Lichtenhouse, I'll just say that the chamber board meeting, there's a chamber board meeting tomorrow morning. So I think that the board hasn't discussed it at all yet.
Okay.
The legislative committee met and discussed it on Thursday, and, uh, as the vice mayor said, the full board is to discuss it tomorrow. Uh, Sally Colley, executive director, uh, offered some thoughts by text, but I think, I think we're waiting for the full board to discuss it before there's like an official position.
Okay. I, I guess where I'll leave it, um, maybe this is a bit of a circular discussion here, is that I just want to know what the right measurement is, what's reasonable, and then want to make sure that it's enforced. Uh, and as long as it's reasonable to the point where, you know, it's not going to disturb too many folks unless they just happen to live in a building that is broadside face to a business and there's, you know, even, even low music unfortunately is going to penetrate those walls because of the construction type, um, that, that it, that it is being enforced, uh, and, and we've got compliance with that enforcement. And again, I want to make sure that landlords are educated as to what their tenants are, or are not allowed to do. Uh, but again, I still don't have a good question as to what that, um, what that decibel level reading is, um, and what should be considered reasonable, because sixty-five, even, you know, ten yards away, um, doesn't seem very, very loud to me, and I'm not sure how you could have any music, uh, at that point. Um, but if folks are at ninety decibels, uh, that's obviously a, a much bigger difference, so that's an enforcement issue. Uh, but again, I, I do, I do support, you know, expanding the, the, the hours, but it's got to be at reasonable levels and it's got to be enforced, uh, and folks have to be in compliance, because we've got to measure the interest of both businesses and residents.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Conley.
Thanks, Mayor Turner. Um, I have not really weighed in on this one, because I feel like we have a big ordinance and we're trying to solve a very precise problem. And the precise problem is that there's outdoor music because of COVID that is really affecting the people who live nearby, particularly those in Pearson Square and four-fifty-five Tinnerhill, in such a way that I have never seen such agonizing letters from people, that they are unhappy in their homes, they are uncomfortable, their children can't sleep, they can't sleep, they can't schedule business calls. So it seems like we need more, we need to do something about that situation in particular. There are other, in the Fall Church Distillery, right there on Tinnerhill Avenue, Tinnerhill Street, is right next to those buildings. There are other outdoor venues that don't have this problem because they're not quite so close to other residences. So what I'm wondering is, what can we do mitigation-wise to make both of these things work? Or has, has Fall Church Distillery tried to point their speakers in a different direction? Do they have that capability? Are they just out there? I mean, if you have a good speaker system, you can not bother the people that are right by you, because there's, because there's ways to direct your speakers. Um, have we said you can only have music twice a week? Once a week? Uh, it seems like whenever they feel like it, basically, before nine PM, they can make as much noise as they want, and there have been no consequences. And that just, that's really frustrating to me. When we first got the, um, message, I think it was from Mr. Comminets, back in the fall, I thought, oh, surely this can be taken care of easily, but it's not been taken care of easily. So I feel like there's two things here. One is a big overall noise ordinance talking about very specific things like decibel level and measurable things and where you're taking those measurements from. Yep. But then there's also just the lives of the human beings who are living there, who all have different tolerances for noise, who should not be continually having to hear music for three days in a row, for five hours a day, eight hours a day. So it seems to me that if we could also put into effect that if you expect that you're going to have three full days of music, you need to get a permit for that. That can't happen every single solitary weekend. That just doesn't make sense. Um, over, uh, let's see, where Sala's outpost is, they can't put music out there because the condo association owns the plaza, so they have to get permission to do anything outside from the condo association. Well, this is an apartment complex and it's not the same piece of property, but it just seems like we need to make sure that the needs of the people that are living there twenty-four hours a day and are in their homes because of COVID, um, are also being taken care of. And it seems like we've bent over backwards to accommodate Fall Church Distillery. We have, you know, how many times, the police have been called there many times, that we've never issued, we've issued warnings. Um, it's not that it's one angry person, it's dozens of people that are very unhappy with what's going on in this situation. So while I, I, I'm just concerned that the ordinance we're doing is not going to solve the problem that we have.
Um, let me just mention that in both Alexandria and Arlington, they do have a mechanism for putting specific conditions on uses with this type of entertainment and, and noise. But they do it, it's a land use process. In other words, it's a zoning permit. In Arlington, there's live entertainment permits. In Alexandria, every restaurant has to have a special use permit. And through that process, they address the specifics of individual situations. And, and trying, we can't, I don't think, really do that effectively through our noise ordinance, but I think it's something to think about down the road, which would be a fairly good-sized project in terms of a zoning, creating a zoning mechanism when there's live entertainment or music like this, that would set the number of nights and, um, address which way the speakers would point, et cetera. And that, that sort of punts the issue, but that is a better way to deal with the specifics of each situation.
I think that is a really good idea, um, because all this outdoor music snuck up on us with COVID. We, it wasn't an issue before, and it's become an issue because of the pandemic, and I think some people really like it. So they probably would like to keep doing it in the future, once we're able to go inside. Some of those outdoor venues have been really popular and successful for the businesses. So I think that we need to go down that path, where we're actually looking at what direction are these speakers pointing, so that they're staying within the radius of where we want them to stay and providing relief. But in the meantime, it's February eighth, and the people that live next door, they haven't gotten relief yet. So what can we do now, um, coming up on President's Day weekend or whatever, for the people who live in that building right now?
Well, I presume this coming weeks, there's probably going to be a whole lot of live entertainment, given the weather that's proposed or...
The weather's on our side.
So I, but I, I tell you, if, if you're finished, I have a few comments. Are you done, Vice Mayor? So...
Yeah, I had one more question about the small power equipment. Just the word, the, what's up on the screen right now? I'm try, I'm reading it, and there's something wrong with that sentence. "It shall be unlawful to operate or permit the operation of any powered saw, drill, sander, grinder, lawn or garden tool or similar device during daytime hours so as to cause a noise disturbance across the property boundary, and it is prohibited?"
Yeah, that, but it's the existing wording, I think. We could strike the last few words, the "and it is prohibited" part.
Okay.
We can, we can do that through the advertisement unless anybody has an objection. I think it's just sort of meaning, "and it is prohibited to do that," but that's already part of the...
Because it's unlawful. Okay, and then we take out all those hours. Is that because daytime hours was previously defined?
Yes, that's a simplification, because tho, that was the same as the definition of daytime hours.
Okay, and then what does the last sentence mean?
So the last sentence means that, um, you can operate such equipment for up to three hours in any twenty-four-hour period, and this is the one that would allow people to operate lawn mowers, leaf blowers, et cetera.
Okay, so is there any chance that someone might decide to turn on their leaf blower at two o'clock in the morning? Because it's three hours in a twenty-four-hour period?
I suppose it is. We could make it, uh, that it can be operated for no more than three hours during the daytime in any twenty-four-hour period.
Yeah, I think that's better.
You can do that, yes.
Thanks.
All right, we should start winding... Okay, great. We should start winding this conversation down. I suspect we can, we could go, uh, speaking of twenty-four hours, uh, pretty good ways on this. Ms. Hardy?
Uh, while we were on small power equipment, um, I think we did receive a public comment about commercial usage of kind of lawn equipment versus residential use. And so while I'm fine with us carving out an exception for, uh, personal use, I think, I can imagine a scenario where you have, you know, commercial, you know, four or five leaf blowers coming out that would really do create a lot of noise, and I think we want to create the flexibility where the police be able to come out, um, and enforce that if necessary, especially if it was going on for many hours. So can that be modified so that the carve-out is really just for personal use?
Um, we, we could do it sort of in residential districts, maybe, but the, I was concerned about that, because it, it seems to me that residential and commercial property owners all need to ma, maintain their lawns. We do have, the three-hour limit would apply, um, to both commercial and residential use. But, I mean, and you could define it as that way, but it just seemed to me that we, it shouldn't be impossible for a person in a commercial district to, to maintain their lawn either.
And it's not necessarily a commercial district. I think it's the commercial equipment that's used would be louder than, say, your residential lawn mower.
And then we, we would need to define that equipment, so that we would know what the distinction was. Um, I'm going to suggest that we leave this as it is with Mary Beth's change, and I think trying to find a way to limit commercial use, um, is something that we can work on between first and second reading, if that would be okay, to try to address that, because I think that's going to take some consideration of how we define what's allowed and what's not as commercial.
Great. Yeah, let's take that down as something we can do between readings. Thank you.
Yes, I think that would...
All right, so, um, as I said, why don't we try to wrap up this conversation? Uh, I do have a few comments and questions that I'll quickly go through. I mean, one, I guess I would just say that we should be a little careful. I wouldn't say be, not be clever by half, but I think when we start to split all these hairs, we may find we create more problems than we solve with some of the subtlety of language. I think we should remember why we're talking about this right now, and I think the main reason is because we have live outdoor entertainment that's causing disturbance to neighbors, which has created a whole lot of complaints we're not sure what to do with. And so I think that some of these other issues the police have effectively dealt with over the years and probably can, continue to do so. But let me, let me just give a few thoughts. I mean, one, I would say, look, why are we here today? Probably in large measure because of COVID, people are doing out, things outside they used to do inside. So venues that used to have music indoors are now doing it outdoors for longer periods of time, because they have to, to stay in business. Will that be the case when we go back from COVID? Um, I think that people will still want to do things outside, but to not to the same extent now. People are not going to want to have as much outdoor entertainment in December when they can do it inside. And so I think we should keep that in mind as well, that this may somewhat, um, I, I wouldn't say resolve itself, but alleviate itself to some degree when COVID's over. Secondly, it sounds like there's at least one restaurant or business that's responsible for the vast majority, if I heard things correctly, of complaints in recent days or recent times. And I would suggest the EDA, the EDO, or the chamber, reach out to them and try to go out, and the police as well, and try to offer some real solutions. and try to go out and the police as well and try to offer some real solutions, such as the Vice Mayor's suggestion to turn your speakers the other way, or turn down your bass, or whatever it might be, to just, just take it down a notch. And I don't know what exactly that is. Maybe there's some sound dampening you could put up and point the speakers the other way and put up some inflatable wall that'll, that'll cut down the echoing of noise. I have no idea. But I think sending someone out there from an organization, the police, somebody to try to work with that owner in particular would be a good idea. Um, three, um, I do have some question about just the actual language. This is kind of a lawyer, maybe talking to another lawyer, but, um, city attorney, we talk about throughout this ordinance, for example, just picking, um, two, for example, 14.51, uh, sub numeral, numeral two, it talks about you won't do this such, uh, in such manner as to cause a noise disturbance. What does that mean, a nu, a noise disturbance? Isn't that subjective? What is a noise disturbance? And if we're talking about the actual, um, decibel readings, then I think we should reference them so as not to cause a noise disturbance as defined in 15, uh, 14.152. But are we actually referring to the decibel chart, or we're just calling it a noise disturbance in some of these provisions, um, in 14.51?
There's a definition of noise disturbance, um, in the beginning of the ordinance, and we have removed the reasonable person standard from the noise disturbance, and then it does refer to the decibel chart.
Okay.
So, and that, so we just haven't gone through, I mean, I suppose there would be a way to change that, but, um, the, let's see. Noise disturbance is a, is any sound which, um, oh, here, it's up on the bore, on the, it's presented now at 167, endangers or injures the safety or health of humans or animals, endangers or injures personal real property, or exceeds the maximum permissible sound levels as they appear in the table. That's the decibel level.
Got it.
So that's noise disturbance. And as I said, we haven't gone through and tried to change that. I suppose there's probably ways to do it.
Okay. So 14-52, we reference a sound, a particular sound meter, a level meter, ANSI S1.
Right.
Should we mention an actual, is that too specific? And will we forget three years from now when there's a new ANSI code? Should we just have sort of a generic reference there as opposed to a particular ANSI level?
I am going to have to go to the folks who, I will look at that. We'll have to go to the folks who are dealing with the noise meters. I don't know if the chief knows or Captain Rao knows at this point.
Well, I mean, I imagine that's the current, the current, you know, ANSI, American, whatever standard.
Right.
But, um, I'm just concerned that if we put that in the ordinance, you know, five years from now, we'll have three different standards. So they move to a different number or nomenclature, and our ordinance will have to be, keep being amended every time the ANSI standard changes. And so I might just suggest that there's a generic way to do that. I might recommend that.
Okay.
As to the, um, section on additional remedies, it seems like we were talking about this earlier, that, um, a violation, you know, one violation gives you the right to, to get your ticket, to get an offense. And then the next thing is the remedy goes to injunction or whatever. There's nothing in between, like we talked about, like repeat offenders, you know, a second charge, we can double the fine. I sort of think like there's, there's got to be something, or should be something between, you know, thing one and the nuclear option about, hey, we're just shutting you down. And given that that's a big thing for both of us, we don't want to go to court and they don't want us to, to shut them down, I would suggest maybe some middle ground here or something where a repeat offender is a second offense, you could double the fine or something like that, something short of kind of a nuclear option.
Well, we've, we've kind of used as the, um, and we can certainly, I, I can consider whether there's some way to build that in, but we, what we have done is we have made the violation a class one misdemeanor. We, and so that's a fine of up to $2,500 and up to a year in jail. And I don't think that anybody would, any judge would impose that on a first offense. So what we would be doing, I would expect, is we would come in for a first offense, go to court, get a fine, and it won't be $2,500, but we would be seeking increasing fines if we had a repeat violation. And then we also have this ability to get it declared a public nuisance, to get an injunction, to order it to go away. So I, I'll look at whether there's a way to put in the ordinance, the increasing fines, but I think that, you know, and in the normal course, that's how the judge would do it. And if we came in and said, Your Honor, this is the third time we've had to be in with this person, and we'd ask for a bigger fine, we could get that. And at some point, we move to an injunction. So
Got it.
That's how I normally have seen it work. And I'll consider whether there's, I just don't know that there's specific authority to lay out increasing fines in the ordinance. And we might have a case in which we don't always want to have to ask for exactly the same thing. So it might be better to just leave it as we can request up to the class one misdemeanor.
Got it. And then just lastly, this notion of getting use permits. I guess I would just say, from Arlington, where I, I practice, uh, I mean, you can have everybody get a use permit, uh, a live music, uh, you know, entertainment use permit of some kind. You got to keep in mind, it's fairly cumbersome to have basically everybody in town get one of those. And who's going to administer that? Whether the city council's going to basically issue those for everybody in town. And then, you know, if you get a whole bunch of complaints from someone, maybe you pull it, or you threaten to pull it.
Right.
But it is, it's a pretty good amount of, of work or potentially for somebody. And so I would just sort of throw that out there as something that to ke, uh, consider before we go down that path. Um, Mr. Duncan and Mr. Snyder have comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. So at line 239, construction of buildings and projects. I'm thinking of when Founders Row was going up and we were pile driving, uh, there for quite some time, um, would, this wouldn't constrain us from doing that, would, would it? Or does it need some sort of special use language, or?
We, uh, there's a procedure for a variance that is pretty simple. It just goes to the city manager. And, um, and that's how construction variances are typically granted. And, and I will say just one other note, that when restaurants had live music in the past, they typically would get a variance. And so that was a pretty simple way for us to sort of just have a conversation with them before they did it. Um, and, uh, uh, so I'll just note that as well.
Okay, good. So there's a process, a variance process that, that a future building could go through to get around any problems that are, uh, brought up in line 239 to 245. Is that right?
Yes, it begins at line 380. But I think it's, it's a good way to address the specifics of each situation.
Okay.
Through the variance process, because they have to contact the manager and get permission.
Okay, good. My only other question, where did we land on the curfew hour? Uh, there was some talk of 10 instead of 10:30, and
Well, I, I would say, unless you believe you might want to go to 11, let's leave it at 10:30. You can always adopt something that's between what we have now, that is nine o'clock and 10:30. And so that, that gives you a little more flexibility. And if somebody wants us to move it to 11, I would suggest you do that at first reading so that it gets advertised, and then you have the flexibility you could need in the future.
Okay. Well, I think I was the one that suggested, maybe others did too, 10:30, which, you know, I'm beginning to think maybe that's a little too late if you have a situation like the one that's been mentioned here, where there's just repeated violation. But by and large, you know, I think 10:30 is not an unreasonable place to at least start the conversation. So we could move that back to 10 if we wanted to after first reading? Is that?
Yes. Yes. You could adopt anything between what you have today, which is nine o'clock, and 10:30, which is what you've advertised. What you couldn't do then, if you advertise, it's 10:30, what you can't do is adopt 11.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Mr. Snyder?
Sure. Uh, thanks a lot. Um, so I'll be brief. I, I think, um, we've committed a lot of counsel and staff member time to this. Um, it, it, it arises out of a specific circumstance, and my request to the, the business is, please do what you need to do to stay in business, but please turn the volume down. It's obvious that you're creating unnecessary issues, and we'll work with you to do anything we can to keep your business open. Um, secondly, I think the letter that we got from the owner of Clarion Dawn suggests that we're going to have a lot of businesses who will be doing this in the future. And so I guess whether we like it or not, it's, it's time to revisit this ordinance to make sure we have something that's fair and forcible, is pro-business, but also protects, um, surrounding residential areas. So, um, seems like something we have to, we have to move on. Uh, but I hope everyone on all sides of this issue understands that we're working really hard to get this right and fair for everyone. Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Conley, then Jim Snyder?
I, I'd just like to say that I'd be happy to leave it at 10 o'clock, uh, rather than change it to 10:30. I don't know if anyone else feels that way, or what Ms. McCosker just explained, that we could move it later. But I'd be happy to say no later than 10 o'clock ever. Um, and I am wondering what, what it, what are, what would the next steps be for the community that feels that they have no recourse at this point? Or that, you know, next week and week after, whenever it warmed up, this is going to happen again before we get to second reading?
So, this is Captain Rao. I guess from an enforcement standpoint, is we can just start issuing tickets?
That sounds like a plan to me. Until we come up with another enforcement mechanism. They've had plenty of warnings.
Yeah, I, I, I will say there's, you know, the mayor's suggestion is a really good one. Um, I would say we have made a lot of efforts in that respect. We've had so many conversations with this one business in particular, um, that, and it seems like so, that those normal conversations of, you know, just please turn the music down and, or point the speakers differently. Uh, that conversation's been had many times.
Right.
So Jim Snyder?
Yep.
Um, I just wanted to mention the, uh, use permit process, which can be effective, but it definitely requires staffing, and it will fill up an agenda for a legislative body or a planning commission, or whoever ends up using it. Seems to me the big issue here in terms of the problem you've got is where it's directly adjacent to or facing residential within a certain number of feet. And, uh, otherwise, it's not really a big problem. So, Carol, I, I don't know whether you could put a different standard in terms of time cutoff, but it would seem to me that, you know, a couple of hours around the dinnertime, beyond that ought to be a cutoff time for anything that close to residential projects. So people can have peace of mind and quiet, you know, after the dinner hour, uh, rather than an all-night party kind of thing. And so perhaps you could have a different standard for ones that are close to residential, if they want to do more, and they could appeal it or have a variance and get special permission with all the things that would take to keep it quiet. But I think it's a locational, and it's a frequency, it's a location, and it's a, it's a length of time in the evening that's causing the problem. And, uh, it needs a different set of standards for that kind of a situation.
All right. So this is a complicated problem that I, we obviously wrestled with for some time. So either one of two things, I think, will happen tonight. Either we go ahead and, and move this forward, not at the finish line this evening, but just move it forward, or we spend some more time talking about it and getting input from other folks. I guess my inclination would be to keep this thing, um, heading forward and continue the conversation in the meantime. But, um, uh, uh, otherwise, I guess I would just say, let's, let's hear finally what people want to do, either through a motion or through last comments. We need to wind this, uh, item down this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I do have additional comments.
Yeah.
Would you like to take that now?
Yes, I would.
Uh, yes. Um, that, uh, from Julie Huggins, who also lives at 455 at Tenner Hill, who, um, was a patron at Falls Church Distillers before pandemic. Um, she does say that sometimes the music is played at a reasonable level even now, but there has been, um, there have been many times since summer 2020 that it's quite deafening for her. Um, she says she doesn't think that, um, live music packs 10 p.m. is acceptable at that level. And, um, she suggests more restrictions for outdoor live music at non-music venues like a bar that face residential areas, especially in places where the types of performances were not allowed in the pre-pandemic times.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, or is that the only one?
That was the last one.
All right. Do we have a motion that anybody would like to make now?
All right. This is, uh, Dave Snyder to get things moving. I move, uh, on first reading, uh, the proposed ordinance.
All right. Do we have a second? All right, Ms. Hiscott on a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor, if we could just request that we step up enforcement until this thing is done, just so that the residents have some sort of react, you know, response from us.
All right. So, ma'am?
This is Snyder. I certainly agree with that.
I, I wonder if the city should reach out to the apartment complex? It seems like the news of this ordinance was shared via the apartment complex. Um, so I wonder if we should reach out to the management there and, and get, either hold a meeting or get further information from residents. That's a great idea.
All right. I think in addition to that, I think the actual rep, the restaurant or business would be good to reach out to as well, make sure they're aware of the changes that may be coming. Um, all right. So we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
And would you be scheduling the public hearing for March 8?
Do we have to schedule it, Mad, uh, uh, City Attorney?
Oh, boy.
Can we do it sooner than that, if we so choose? Carol, are you on the line?
Yes. I'm, I'm sorry. I was having trouble getting unmuted. I believe it could be scheduled for, is it February 22nd, Celeste? Yeah, so you could
I would have to send the ad tomorrow.
Okay. So you could set it for February 22nd. I just gave it a little more time to work on any issues that came up. So if you wish to set it for February 22nd, you could do that.
All right. What's the consensus of council? Earlier, later?
This is Snyder. I prefer the March 8. I want to make sure that everybody reads it. Everybody has a chance to comment on it. If we have to adjust times or other things like that, we can, we have the, the time to do that. That would be my suggestion. We'd go with March 8.
All right, other folks?
I would agree with Mr. Snyder.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'd like to get some more information on decibel levels, personally.
All right. All right. So let's keep that, uh, keep, keep that March date, uh, which is consistent. So do we, uh, need, did you want the, uh, motion to be amended or changed, Madam Clerk, to include the date? Is that what you're
No, that's fine. I just needed that for informational purposes. Thank you.
All right. Any further comments? Uh, Madam Clerk, go ahead then.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yeah.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Sure. And I guess I would just make sure Mr. Villa, Villa is, um, is available when he's at Boston College to continue to work on this next year. So, uh,
That's the plan.
Yeah, that's
To all be here.
All right. Sounds good. We're counting on it. All right.
You want to learn about the legislative process, Jack. Here you go.
I mean, out of order.
The lightning speed at which it happens. All right. Let's move on to the next item, Madam Clerk.
Yes, we have TO 21-02 ordinance to amend ordinances 2009, 2012, 2016, and 2018 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2021 for the general fund, stormwater fund, and the capital improvements program funds.
So, uh, council, uh, I'll just mention, uh, briefly that this is before the council now, is a, is the third budget amendment for FY 21. It's before you for first reading. Um, the, we reviewed this at work session. Um, since work session, um, we have got this at work session. Since work session, we have gotten word from the school administration that with respect to the use of CARES funding to assist with the return to learning in person, that there, that they did actually ask for the remainder of the CARES funding. There's $250,000 that would be unappropriated if absent any other action. They have asked that, that 200, that, that, that remaining piece be allocated to the schools for that purpose. So we wanted to just highlight that point. That would be the only change since the council saw this at work session. And if the council desired to, to allocate the remainder of the CARES money for that purpose, that could be done by motion from the deus tonight, and then the documents would be updated for second reading to reflect that change. I just wanted to note that. And Ms. Bawa, any other kind of key points that you would want to communicate before we answer any questions on this item?
Good evening, Mayor Tarter, members of the council. The only other change I would like to highlight, we have also added 10,000 for utility and food relief as part of the CARES grant request of 160,000. So 150,000 of that is for emergency, emergency rent assistance and 10,000 for food and utility. And other than that, there are no changes. Off note, a couple of projects that I can mention is a request to move some funds from underspending in the sheriff's department to pay for installation of a fire hydrant at Tanner Hill. And then we also have funding from Rushmark, the developer of 301 West Broad, to install ADI compliant ramps on sidewalks adjacent to Big Chimney Park. That's for 41,000 and also 48,000 for neighborhood traffic calming program by the same developer. Additionally, we are requesting a transfer, one-time transfer of 177,000 from operating maintenance costs to fund West Columbia Travel Branch project. And this project has milestones all set up, and the funding can see, can be spent right away. And this is one of the six projects that was recommended by the task force. And I think with that, I will stop and see if there are any questions.
All right, we have a few questions. One, just before we even get started on people asking questions, could you say what the implications are for that allocation to the schools? What are the allocations for other things that we might have intended to use the money for or are using it currently?
So the 250,000 that so far is not required for anything, but any unspent funds would be used, of course, we would not leave it on the table, but we would be used for drawing down against staff costs like public safety and public health, staff costs that are eligible for reimbursement under CARES. Additionally, there is funding for emergency rent relief, and the landlords and tenants would have to go through, would now have to go through Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. It is a pretty decent program. From what it looks like, they're allowed to get fair market value rent. And the program is up till June of 2022. And in areas can be, past rent can be drawn as far back as April 2020, and would allow for 15 months of total rent. And paperwork has to be provided with proof of lease and all that stuff every three months. So there, it is going to be a different process. And there is no cap right now, but if there are any changes, we would not have any funding. That could be one possible if a part is required for any rent relief eventually down the line, once this program is implemented. And this will start on April 1. So we do not know all the details, but so far, these are the details that we have received from the Virginia Department Staff, Department of Housing Staff. And of course.
The, the emergency money, emergency public works, et cetera. Mr. Shields, how's that going to affect you? We heard that it might not be available for, for a city to use. Is that right?
Yeah. So that is, is money that would be in addition to the budget that we already have. So it, it won't have a negative impact on services. It would have had a fiscal benefit to the city, just in general. And we would have sort of built it into our general fund budget in, inappropriate for, for future uses. Is that, is that correct, Ms. Bawa?
Uh, yes.
Future use is what do you mean, like traffic calming or something like that?
Well, it probably could be used for anything. In effect, what we were going to be using it for is, is just to fund the city for admin leave and things like that, that were already budgeted. But it is a legitimate COVID-related expense. And so it really would have been, in effect, new, new money for the city in the current fiscal year.
All right, thank you. Let's open it up to questions. We've got Ms. Hardy, then we've got Mr. Snyder.
Great, thank you. So on the school's request for the remaining 250, do we have more details on what it would be for? Is it kind of for the current hybrid opening that we talked about? I think we all very much support wanting schools to reopen, but is there a timing issue where we need to get this done before they do the hybrid reopening in a couple of weeks?
Well, there was an earlier discussion of this, and this is extremely complex and demanding for the whole school administration, for parents, and for everyone. They have identified needs. They just haven't completely fleshed out exactly what the dollar amounts are going to be associated with them. So to be frank, I think the school administration has asked for a little bit of time to provide a bit more detail on how they would use the funds, but in their kind of quick analysis, $250,000 is what they did put in as a request.
And Karen, do you have the counting on what the schools have received already from CARES, either through us or from the state directly?
Yes. So they have received 838,000 approximately today, and they have expended all those funds. There is another 144,000 that is the new tranche that has been announced that they received notification of that is coming. And that is the one that the, their board was writing a letter about the allocation procedures. But that should be available soon, but I do not know the exact timing of it.
Got it. So the 250 would be in addition to the 838 and the 144 you just quoted?
That's correct.
And then I had the similar questions is what the mayor asks is, you know, what we would have used this money for if it weren't going to the schools? And I heard you say potential staff costs and then maybe rent relief? I think in previous conversations, we talked about how kind of the rent utility food assistance might run out by February or March. So if we do make this allocation and we have nothing left in CARES, and we don't have a new federal relief bill that comes, if we have future rent relief requests coming, how would we fund that?
So we have enough funds allocated for food and utility relief through the end of June with the 10,000 that we're requesting now. And as far as the rent relief with the CDBG, we have funds till mid-March. And starting April 1, there is the new Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development program that the tenants and landlords would have to get reimbursement directly from them for assistance, emergency rent assistance. And that program is valid June of 2022. So.
Is it guaranteed that people would get the rent relief as opposed to they'd go directly to the state instead of coming through us? Or is it just kind of an application and then they may or may not fulfill it?
So they will go directly to the state and get it, and they can get up 200% of the fair market value of the rent. And, and there is no cap, as there has been in, as it wasn't thought of in earlier, but it has been confirmed. There are, there is no cap in there. So that's the program they have put up. It hasn't started. So we do not know if there are any hiccups, or there may be any hiccups, but.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
All right, Mr. Snyder, Snyder followed by Mr. Littenhouse.
Sure. So I asked one, two questions when this came before. Number one, is there any amount from this money that Fairfax Health Department could use in order to speed up and to provide more vaccinations for our citizens? The answer, I think, correct me, Wyatt, if I'm wrong here, but the answer, no, they can't really take that and really don't have a reason for it. My second inquiry was regarding the schools and, and it's so critical that we open the schools. We've heard from our citizens, it's critical for the safety of school employees and to get the economy, not only here, but, but elsewhere, but especially here, because that's our major concern, up and running. So we won't have to do as much rent relief. We won't have to do as much business relief. And getting the schools started up is fundamental, I think, to the welfare of our citizens. So I, I would support up to the $250,000 on addition to the budget for those reasons. Thank you.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yeah. Does this additional $250,000 have to be allocated right now?
So that, that's a question that we had, that Karen and I were discussing before this meeting. If it were not, we would probably, this money would still then be an unallocated portion of CARES, and the council could allocate it at a future date. And, you know, essentially, I think the schools would probably expend the funds and then ask to be reimbursed through a future allocation. The difficulty is that that's in May. That's when we typically do our last fiscal year wrap-up. So I do think probably from the school administration's perspective, they would prefer to have the certainty that they have this allocation.
But we could allocate this money before May, even though it's outside of the normal cadence?
Yeah, you could always, you can do a budget amendment anytime you want to. That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would prefer that we wait. One, because this request came after the schools had indicated they were going to open hybrid in February. So I'm still a little unclear as to what this money's used for. And if there's $970,000 or close to a million dollars in, in money that's already been provided, I, I would just like to know what that's going to be used for, as opposed to saying, yes, we'll take it and then figure it out. I, I agree with Councilman Snyder. I'll, I'll move mountains to get those schools open, to get kids back full-time. But absent a, an actual plan to do that, and act, and, and absent specific requests, or an explanation as to what that money is going to be used for, I'd rather keep it in reserve. Because the one thing that we have not done for our citizens since this closing is help shore up some of the expenditures and the pain that most of our citizens have felt. And I'm not talking about rent relief and, and food relief, but for the general citizen. So I'd, I'd like to wait and see if there is a plan, what this money will actually be used for. And if we find a need and can weigh that need, and we've actually got a good case for expending that money between now and May, I'm happy to release that. But I'd like to, I'd like to receive some additional details on exactly how this money is going to be used to quote unquote, open up the schools. Because again, the commitment to open hybrids already been made, but I've not seen a commitment to opening full-time. And if they need money to do that, then I'm happy to allocate it. But I haven't seen those plans or those details yet. So I'm not, I'm, I'm not one to, to stroke a blank check and then let folks figure out how they want to spend that money.
Other comments? Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
No, there isn't.
All right, Vice Mayor Connolly?
Mr. Shields, you mentioned something earlier. I just want to clarify the process of how we got this $250,000 request from the schools. At our last meeting, Mr. Snyder said, let's make sure we cover what the schools need. And then you asked the school administration, how are you doing? Do you need more money from CARES, right? Is that what happened? You're muted.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah. So we, we did relay that request. One thing that I think we didn't make clear is that they needed to get back with us quickly. And so I think they were thinking they had a little bit more time to put a budget together. And when we contacted them again, you know, on Friday, they, you know, they, they started really trying to put pencils to it. But it just was, you know, they've been really busy on a whole host of issues, and they just didn't have time to kind of work up a more detailed budget. They did, they did say that they, they know that they will have extra costs that they had not budgeted for in, in making the, the move back to in-person learning.
So, so if we just hold this $250,000 not, not appropriated for anything specific at this point, and then give the school staff more time to provide a budget of exactly what they would use it for, then we would take up, we would do another budget amendment, not this budget amendment. So that money would just stay in our reserves. Is that correct?
That's correct. These CARES monies, you know, the way the state did it is they wrote the city a check. So it is in the city's coffers.
Right.
And so it would just stay there. We, Ms. Bawa, we have until December 31 of the current year to expend it all. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And in term, we may get additional CARES funding that comes in. Is that correct, too?
It probably won't be called CARES funding. I think the next round will have a different name, but yes.
Yeah. So, so there, there is more funding in the pipeline that, we don't know how much, we don't know when, we don't know what it'll be allocated for, but we can assume that there's more coming from federal government and state government.
Yes, that's the read that we have. But how it plays out, obviously, there's going to be twists and turns on that road.
Right, right. And I know that our needs are huge in many areas. So if, if, if we can look at this budget today and look at our budget amendment and then set aside that $250,000 and wait until we get from the schools what they're going to spend it on, I think that makes sense. I just don't want to put anything in jeopardy either way, not having enough to help citizens who need rent relief or not having enough to help the schools reopen.
All right, thank you. Other comments? Mr. Snyder?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to put a motion on the table to approve the proposed budgetary amendment with up to $250,000 allocated to the schools based upon a plan and budget.
All right, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Excuse me?
This is Debbie Hiscott. I'll second that.
All right. Conversation, discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to say, I'm not going to support that because I want to see a plan. And we've expended a lot of money. And if we've still got money in reserve, I'd like to set that aside. I'm happy to move everything forward. But absent somebody telling me exactly what they're going to spend that $250,000 on, I'd like to leave that off the table. So I'm not going to support it as, as proposed. But I will be more than happy to allocate that money to somebody that comes with us, comes to us with a specific plan on what it's going to be used for and what it's going to accomplish. So I think it'd be foolhardy of us to start handing out money to folks. Because if you ask somebody if they need money, of course, they're going to take it. And I'm not saying folks don't need it, but I want to see a plan. Because we've got limited funds, and there's a lot of people that haven't received any assistance, as a matter of fact, have been carrying huge burdens. And all that needs to be taken into consideration in due time. But absent a plan and support for that money, I think it should sit there. And then once we get that plan and the specifics, then we can deliberate and make a decision. So I'm not supporting it as proposed right now.
All right, other comments? Ms. Hiscott?
My understanding of that motion is that it includes a plan. That's why I seconded it. So maybe I misunderstood.
No, it doesn't include a plan.
To my knowledge.
Somebody, can somebody explain to me what that means?
Sure. So what we're saying is the schools have made a request. They're going to need the money. The cap is at $250,000, or maybe less. And it will only be allocated when a plan and budget is submitted for it.
But it's, it's already been allocated to the schools. So if we identify.
Up to $250,000.
But if we identify another need before then, as long as the schools propose a plan, that money's. plan, that money's being allocated.
You're right. It goes to the schools.
Yeah. I'm not supporting that.
Okay. Fair enough. Let's have a vote.
All right. Other folks? Other comments? So, just to clarify on this issue, Mr. Shields, you have not received a detailed itemization of what they intend or would like to do with it. They've just said in general, "We could use it," but not necessarily how it would be allocated. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Other comments? Anyone else? Mr. Duncan? Mr. Duncan, you may be muted.
Sorry. I haven't said anything meaningful. I'm just dithering. Yeah. I mean, it seems a little unusual to set aside any amount of money without somewhat more specific needs being expressed. I mean, for any category, that would be a little unusual. I mean, I certainly want to give schools all the resources they need. It's, you know, just a little unclear right now, I think, in their own minds. They just haven't had time. They've been busy doing, you know, putting out many other fires to specify. To me, it would build public confidence if the schools were able to come with a very specific, you know, budget as part of their overall budget, maybe. So, I think, as it's currently worded, I'm not sure that I'm aware I could vote for that.
All right. Ms. Hiscott, and Vice Mayor Connally?
Yeah. Now, I know I was the second on that vote, but I guess I was thinking that they were one and the same. But the clarification being that, in theory, you could be obligating yourself to $250,000 that you could need to spend elsewhere. So, I've just, thank you for the clarifications. I did not understand that correctly.
All right. Vice Mayor Connally?
I'm just wondering if we want to contact some of the schools right now and see if they want to hop on and explain, or not?
I don't know. I guess, to my mind, I think it's too late to try to sort of do this on the fly. I mean, we could certainly defer. I presume we can defer this a matter to a later time. Is that right, Mr. Shields? Is there anything else in here that's so pressing it couldn't wait for, you know, a couple of weeks?
So, that's another conversation that Karen and I had. The one that is the time-sensitive is the $177,000 for the pipe underneath the WOD. That's an arrangement we have with the Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority. They want to know that that's a go, because they're telling their contractor to put that pipe in underneath the trail. I think that's kind of the main one. Karen, are there any others that are time-sensitive?
And also the ADA ramps on the big chimney sidewalks.
Yeah. I would just say, look, if we, if people are uncertain about going forward with it, then I would suggest, you know, vote as you think appropriate. But trying to get someone on right at 11 o'clock and sort of sort this through, I think it's going to be very difficult to try to work this out at this point, presuming that if a budget was available, it would have been shared with us earlier. And so, I would just suggest, let's vote on the information we have right now. And we can revisit this at any time, correct, Mr. Shields? Did you not say that earlier, so that in two weeks, if a budget is proposed that people aren't agreeable to, we can certainly vote at that time?
That's correct. It can be revisited, and we will not, obviously, do anything with that $250,000 until such time as council does take action on it, if that's the decision of council.
All right. So, we have a motion right now. Let's try to wrap this up. I know Mr. Lichtenhouse has a hand up, and I'm going to recognize him. But I would say, after that, why don't we just go ahead? There is a motion on the table, and vote on that, and then see what else we need to do here. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
No, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. I was just going to suggest, I feel like it would be easier to remove that portion and just vote on it at a later point in time, as opposed to getting the wheels going. But if the motion's out there, and it's been seconded, we obviously have to vote on that.
Unless, I don't, I don't know. I could ask the city attorney. It sounds like the second for that motion understood it to be something other than it was. And maybe we can ask the city attorney if it's possible for the second, the person who made the second, to withdraw their support?
I think that, I think that you'd be better off to have a motion to amend, take that off, and vote on the motion to amend, since the second has already been made, and there's been discussion.
So, I would make a motion to amend, that we pull that money out until we get a detailed plan. And then, we can vote on it immediately as to, as to the, as to whether that plan is worth, you know, allocating $250,000. So, my motion is to move this forward absent, but take that $250,000 allocation out of the, out of this, this particular, we can talk about it at a later point in time.
All right. So, we have a motion to amend. Do we have a second on the motion to amend?
I'll second it.
All right. So, Ms. Hardy on the second. So, I'm going to ask the city attorney to make sure we do this properly. What would we vote on now? The amendment itself?
You vote on the motion to amend, and then after you've decided whether you're, then you would take up either the amended motion or the original motion, depending on the results of this vote, and do your vote on that.
All right. So, let's go ahead and vote on the amendment, then. So, unless there's further comment, Madam Clerk?
I will note that the first motion was to approve the ordinance. It wasn't to grant first reading. This is on first reading, so I don't know if that makes a difference.
Well, I think, I understood the intention to be the motion that was before council on that, on this resolution, or on this ordinance. So, I think, I think it was a motion on first reading, to approve the first reading.
All right. Let's go ahead and vote on the amendment, then. This would be on the amendment to take out the $250,000 from that motion. So, this is on the amendment only. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connally?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shans Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
No.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you.
All right. And Madam City Attorney, then we will vote on the amended motion?
Yes.
All right.
And so, the amended motion, I believe, is the motion that is set forth in the staff report.
Okay.
So, this is a grant first reading, TO21-02, scheduled second reading and public hearing for February 22nd, 2021, and advertise the same according to law. Is that what we're voting on?
Yes. That's what I understood the original motion to be with the $250,000.
Which has now been moved by amendment, so we're back.
As amended, right?
So, you're back to that original motion.
Okay. So, let's go ahead. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connally?
I think yes. I'm still confused, but.
So, just to clarify and correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially, what's on the table right now is the motion that was proposed or suggested in the staff report, which does not include the $250,000 at this time.
Correct.
Okay. So, that $250,000 is still in reserves, will be allocated in the future once we see a detailed budget for its use.
Yes.
So, if that is the case, then my answer is yes.
All right. Keep going, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shans Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on. Other business. And remember, we do have a closed session tonight. Is there other business not on the agenda, standing committee, regional committee reports? Any just general council member comments? All right. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break to get the cameras down, and we'll come in, reconvene in closed session. All right. So, we're reconvening at 10 after 11 in closed session.
Can I confirm before the TV goes down if we need to take the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. We do, we should take the motion.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. Let me just make sure it got provided to me, which I don't, oh, here it is. I'm sorry. Yeah. Let's go ahead and do the motion before he goes, or before the TV comes down. So, upon a motion made by council member.
Connally.
Connally, and seconded by council member.
Hardy.
I'm going to go with Hardy.
That's good.
And passed by a vote of city council. Council wanted a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3 for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Discussion of private property as affordable housing. Councilmember Connally?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yep.
Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Charter? Yep. All right. The time is 11:06. We'll reconvene in closed session with the cameras down at 11:11.
Yep. It should be fine.
All right. We're ready to go? All right. We're reconvening in an open session. Before we do that, we're going to go ahead and make a motion or two. Upon a motion made by council member.
Connally.
And seconded by council member.
Hiscott.
And passed by a vote of council, or city council. Council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Connally?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yep.
Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Carter? Yep. All right. It's 11:45. This is a certification. Upon a motion made by council member.
Connally.
And seconded by council member.
Hiscott.
And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session, and was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the body. Councilmember Connally?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy? Is that a yes, Hardy?
Yes.
All right. Lichtenhouse?
Yeah.
Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Carter? Yep. All right. Anything else anybody wants to say before we adjourn? All right. Let's call it a night. We're adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Good night. Thank you.
Thanks.